All right, I'm gonna go ahead and bring this meeting to order. It's 5:02. And we're gonna open it up for a public comment for anything regarding closed session at this point, or for anything public comment at this closed session items. Items one through four. And I know that the one particular person just came on. Currently, we are open. We are taking any public comment for a closed session. And if you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand and we will get your comment. All right. Seeing none, I guess we will adjourn to a closed session meeting and we'll return on our about 6:00 P. M. All right, ladies and gentlemen, it is 6 o'clock game time. So let's go ahead and bring this meeting to order. And if you would all stand and join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
That was no symphony, but the heart was there. All right, moving on, roll call, please.
Mayor Saragosa, I'm sorry, Mayor Thomas, excuse me.
Here.
We lost Regina?
We might have.
We can do self.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay, let's try this again.
All right.
Mayor Thomas. Vice Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Burley.
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Here.
Councilmember No.
Here.
All right. Look, thank you. Moving on to ceremony matters, we have none. Closed session report, City Attorney John Driscoll.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, the council did not take reportable action with respect to the two litigation items, nor with the labor negotiation item.
All right, thank you very much. And on to item number five, adoption agenda. First, I would like to the city manager, Cleve Morris, has asked us to remove 10.1 to a future date uncertain. And and I believe there's one more item there. Vice Mayor Taylor.
I was going to request that we move 12.6 up to right after 12.1. Just because I was anticipating there may be people, several people that want to speak on that.
All right. Six, okay. Any other, any other additions or changes to the agenda?
With those changes, I'll move.
All right. We got first and second roll call, please.
Councilmember Burley.
Hi.
Councilmember No.
Hi.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Thomas.
Hi. All right, brief comments by city council members. I will start off with Councilmember Burley.
Gosh, I've attended a couple of League of Cities meetings, virtual and the roundtables, and then did Transportation Commission and been talking with the folks on the Fire Safety Council, and it's about it.
All right. Councilmember No.
Many comments at this time, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Taylor.
Um, thank you. First, I really wanted to thank all of the law enforcement officers and personnel that worked on the Roman Lopez cases. Just heartbreaking the details that have come out, and I know that the case took a big toll on everyone that was involved in. It's just a relief to see it come to a conclusion and that those responsible for this horrible, these horrible acts were brought to justice. So I wanted to say thank you. And aside from that, there's several positions on city committees and commissions that are open and applications are due this Friday. There's positions available on the Planning Commission, Peak, which is our Economic Advisory Commission, Parks and Rec, and Measure H and L Committee, which oversees and helps, you know, advise the city on how best to use all of the dollars that we have for fixing our roads. So these are really important committees where a lot of important decisions are made. And if anyone's interested, I encourage them to apply. And other than that, I've, you know, all of the the commission and committee meetings that we all sit on resumed after our January break. So I sat on a couple of those meetings, and that's, that's all I have to report.
All right. Councilmember Saragosa.
Nothing for me at this time. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I do, if you bear with me, I have a few things. I had a bittersweet opportunity to address the press regarding the Roman Lopez arrests, and it was, it was a challenging and a sad occasion to have to discuss those things and have that brought back up again. And I, at the same time, I recognize how important it is for our city to, you know, mourn the loss and and give us an opportunity to move forward. Move forward with prosecution and see and see and see this to the end. And and to that end, I know that that they, that the police force has worked extremely hard and has worked with all of our partner agencies, and I'd like to thank them as well for their effort helping us bring this case to where it's at. If I know that it was a very challenging case to, to, to get to this point for a lot of reasons that the, that the, you know, we'll discover as time goes on. So I wanted to thank our police force, the DA's office, and all the other agencies that were involved, which were multiple in getting seen this to its, to the point where it is right now. Also, a bit of good news today. The sourdough and company sandwich shop downtown won their case, and they are allowed to move forward with opening their store with their, well, they're open, but to use their name and and move forward and make a lot of sandwiches. So we look forward to their, to their sandwich making downtown and that is a, that was, that was a good thing to happen. Cleve, did you have something there?
I just want to, Mayor, if you would like, Regina is prepared to update us on where we are on applications for commissions and committees. I don't have to do that, but if you'd like her to do that, she can.
Okay, when I'm done, I'll certainly search for that.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. Wasn't meaning.
That's quite right. When I reach out to her, I met with the Human and Health Services Director, Don Simone, regarding the county considering the idea of purchasing a motel on Upper Broadway for a potential, a transitional housing project. At this time, it was strictly a courtesy call to let the city know that we, that they were considering. They asked us for our input regarding that issue and and for that, they, you know, it is, the county has started addressing that on their end. And it was discussed at their meeting today. And that's all I have for that issue. I met with Mark Acuna and Sarah Rashid regarding PSPS, and Mark spent quite some time with Ms. Rashid touring around the town, as well as they had discussions regarding PG&E and their zones and, you know, a lot of things that we've been talking about and our concerns all through the year while we're getting on it first part of this year. And I tell you what, Mark, Mark Acuna, you know, retired or ex-council member, ex-mayor. He has, he is, he is really dog on a bone getting, working on this issue for the city, and I certainly appreciate his, his his participation there. I attended the El Dorado County Transportation Commission regarding all things transportation in the county. In there, they presented the plans, you know, the, the, the long-term plan for for our community, and and they have everything to do with bike trails, pedestrian trails, roads, bridges, all the, not the construction, but the accumulation of money and disposition of that money, getting grants and all those things there. And also, I'd like to recognize Kara Taylor was seated as, as the chair for both transportation and transit. So we are well represented with Kara leading, leading both of those organizations and supporting our town, and that was a hefty lift on her part, and and she did a great job running her first meeting. So, so thank you for, for stepping up to the plate there, Kara. I met with Supervisor Thomas and Cleve, Cleve and our Vice Mayor Taylor regarding the Water Agency. And this is a very interesting issue. The Water Agency, their mission, ensuring that El Dorado County has adequate and affordable water to maintain economic prosperity, protect the environment, and support the rural agricultural way of life for today and in the future. How does that relate to Placerville? Well, we're starting to understand that there's some connectivity there between the city and agriculture and water and what the agriculture needs to grow and what the city needs of agriculture grows, which we all know is related to traffic. Who knows where it's gonna go, but there's an interesting nexus there that we're exploring. So more to come on that. But that, that initial introduction was brought to us by Supervisor Thomas, and and it was, it was a great introduction, and we look forward to seeing where this is going. I also attended a board of Sacramento Division of California League of Cities meetings. We talked about I don't even want to go into that. It wasn't I don't know, it was a great thing. So with that said, let's go ahead and Ms. O'Connell, do you have some more information for us?
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. Um, yeah, just real quick, I wanted to just update you with the applications that we've received. The Planning Commission, there are two seats with terms expiring March 1, 2025. So it's two full-time four, four-year term seats. We have received two applications for Recreation and Parks Commission. We have two seats with terms expiring March 1, 2025, and then there is one seat with an unexpired term, which will terminate sooner in 2023. Have not received any applications yet for the Recreation and Parks Commission. We have Measures H and L Committee with two seats with terms expiring March 1, 2025. Two applications have been received. And then for Peak, Placerville Economic Advisory Committee, there are several seats open. And we have received one application. And with Peak, there are it's comprised of representatives coming from different areas, or Cleve, excuse me if I'm saying this wrong, but we have representatives from the Broadway area, I guess, and we have at-large, we have Chamber of Commerce representative, and then also a PDA representative. So we were accepting applications until the end of the week on Friday. And if anybody would like any more information on those, they can go to the city of placerville.org website and find out more information on those. But just wanted to let you know that that's what we've received so far.
Thank you very much. This call, um. Councilmember Saragosa.
Just a quick, I mean, with the, I don't know what you call it, but the, the changes at PDA and what that actually even entails anymore, I wonder if we shouldn't have staff bring back maybe some alternatives for us, because I don't think that I just don't know if that's still a representative of the businesses downtown as it used to be in the past. So it's something for us maybe to take a look at.
All right, Patty.
I'm wondering if this would, if we should consider maybe extending the deadline.
Well, you, you wouldn't be able to do that tonight, I don't believe, because it's not on your agenda, but we can bring it back at your next meet, next meeting. If we don't have sufficient, then we could do it at that point. I see Mr. Driscoll, is that correct, Mr. Driscoll?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm that what you said would be correct. They can't do it tonight, but in the future.
No, and I didn't think we could, but I just would like the, the possibility, because I think several of us have made a concerted effort, you know, to try to get people on, and it takes a while. So.
Quick question, does it need to come back to us, or do you just have the authority and discretion at the staff to extend the deadline?
Good question. We, we set the, we didn't technically, I guess, we set the deadline outside of council meeting, but we notified in a council meeting what that deadline would be. So I guess that's kind of a gray area, John. You'll later just extend it.
The cleanest approach would have the council extended.
Okay.
And a scheduled and have it agendized. Is that what you're saying, John?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. No further comments there. Thank you very much, Regina. Appreciate it. And moving on, Dave Warren, it's it's your show now. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, I'm pleased to announce that we have Dory Zumwalt, Client Services Director from Sedgwick, to present the Workers' Comp Trending Report, and overall, she has some great news. And with that, I'll hand it over to Dory.
Dory, you are muted. There we go.
Thank you for that. Hi, Dory. Hi, I'm, I'm Dory Zumwalt with Sedgwick here for my annual update on how we're doing with the workers' compensation program. And so I am going to share my screen. Hopefully, this goes better than the mute button. Okay, I think, I think I did it. Can everybody see my screen? Yay, okay. So last year, I told you, if you recall, don't ever expect a year like, like last year to ever happen again, because that was just crazy, where you only had two claims. And very uncommon. This year was definitely more in line with the average where we're usually at with, with claims. There were three indemnity claims, which means that there was a lost time or or additional investigation or discovery was needed. And five medical-only claims, so that's a very good proportion. We like to see more medical onlys than the indemnity claims. And our total paid and incurred by fiscal year. So this chart compares year over year, how we look for those injuries that came in during the fiscal year. And it just looks, it, because last year's was uncommonly low, it kind of skews it a little bit, but you guys are right on track exactly where you should be. And in fact, I'm I think I might be the first person to say COVID so far for this meeting, but I have noticed because of COVID there's been with workers' comp claims, it's taken, one, it's taken a lot longer for claims to resolve. It's taken a lot longer for people to return back to work. We have seen an increase in lost days. And also modified duties a little bit more difficult and getting in to see doctors' appointments, especially during this fiscal year, 1920, because that was at the beginning of COVID. So we'll see, we'll see a little bit of the effects of COVID for this year and definitely for fiscal year 2021. So the next chart shows the total paid year over year, and this encompasses all claims. So the chart before just showed the claims that came in during that fiscal year, but this chart shows all claims and how much we, we have spent. And this year was less than the years past, so great job there. And then also a chart showing our recoveries, because I like to show that money comes back to the, to the city as well. And so I gave you a little spoiler, our lost time, our lost days are higher than they, they've been in the past. We did have three indemnity claims this year, and that usually corresponds to last time. However, only 154 days of lost time is exceptional for the city, so and especially in light with, with the complications of COVID. The next chart is our closing ratio. So while we can't have a 400% closing ratio every year, we're at least over 100%, which is what we want to be. At 100% means however many new claims came in, we were able to close out at least that many, and and we were able to do that again this last fiscal year. And so the next few charts go over the trending or the, the different types of workers' comp injuries that we've seen over the last five years for the city. And so strain is number one. That is usually the number one for most public entities. And cumulative trauma is also, fortunately, you only had two cumulative trauma claims, but as you can see, those claims are very expensive. So we like to do whatever we can to avoid those cumulative trauma claims. They are about 80% higher than any of the other different types of injuries on average. So and so good thing that there's only two there. And the type of body injured is, the knee was more expensive. And there was a claim, a knee claim, and that is driving that number up. It was just one knee claim that's really driving that, that number up. Otherwise, everything else looks great. The nature of injury, again, strain is always number one. And then the top five occupation, so police is, police is, is they have the most dangerous job, they have the most risk for injury. So there's no surprises there that for any public entity with a public or with a police department or sheriff's department, you're always going to see a police or sheriff is, is number one for the occupation. But the other thing that I'm looking at is the other types of occupations to make sure that that green line, as you can see, is, is right at the bottom. And that's showing me that the severity is not high, so that's fantastic. So you guys are doing, doing great there. And then I, this is very simple math. I just took the, the frequency and severity and came up with the average. So when you have a large claim, a large loss, it's gonna skew those numbers a little bit, but still, it's fun to see an average. And so there's, this is exactly, well, you guys are much better than where you, where most public entities are. And the average indemnity claim for the state of California is about 70,000. So you guys are half of that. And especially with police where their benefits are, are a little different. So everything is, is wonderful there. Especially for the Parks and Rec, that you only have a $500 average per claim. That's just, that's amazing. So good job, Parks and Rec. I also put together, now that we're after the Super Bowl, we can be the Monday morning quarterback. So I like to look and see what types of claims did we have over the last five years? What were, what were the ones that cost the city the most? And what can we do to prevent those types of injuries? So we're looking at that, and unfortunately, there's a lot of cumulative traumas, which are it's just, it's just how it is. They are a lot more expensive. They usually involve multiple body parts. And it's usually an injury, of course, that happened over time, so they didn't receive medical treatment quickly as one would if they sprained their ankle playing basketball or something. So as I review this list and look through all of the losses for the city over the past five years, there's no trends there. There's nothing. There's no big risk management areas that need to be fine tuned. So with that said, you guys are, and when I look at the top 10 claims and the fact that your number 10 claim is $3,500, that's fantastic. Then I also have a comparison, because the, the city is a member of Northern California City Self-Insurance Fund, which is a pool that manages workers' comp and liability for cities within the region. And so I put together a chart showing where does Placerville compare to these other cities, because it's always fun to just do a little comparison. So we have, and again, I'm looking at that average class per claim. So if you have if you only have, let's look at City of Willows with 12 claims. So their average is going to be skewed because they don't have a lot of numbers, a lot of claims. But if you look at Rockland, with average claim is about 20,000, I'm gonna scroll back and look at Folsom, theirs is about 13,000, Galt's is about 16,000. So looking at that, Placerville is right in line where, where you need to be, and again, much less than that state average for a worker's compensation claim. So keep up the good work. And I'm really interested to see how things are gonna look for fiscal year 2021. I'm, I'm already seeing, especially with, with cities and counties, we are seeing a lot of COVID claims. And but we're seeing a lot less workers' comp claims for other injuries. So I'm really interested to see how this year is gonna play out. So to be continued.
Thank you, Dory. I have a quick comment. In looking at slide nine and 10, when you compare Placerville, Auburn, Oroville, and Red Blood have a similar payroll size, which is a metrics when you compare those agencies. So and we're actually lower than all three of those other agencies. So well done.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, any questions from council members? All right, does this, Cleve, I'm gonna ask you, is this something we open up to the public for comment?
Uh, yes, you probably should.
All right, you can hold tight with this, Dory, to see, to see if we have any further questions for you. And by the way, thank you so much for the glowing report and all the recognition of our staff. I know that our, our, they work hard to to make sure they're, you know, being safe and all that. So thank you for the recognition. That's important. If we can open up to Regina, can we open up the public comment, please?
Sure, public comment is open for item 6.2. This is the Workers' Compensation Trending Report. If you're joining by phone, please select star nine to indicate your desire, desire to speak. And you'll be called upon when it's your turn. If you're joining by your computer, use the raise hand option at the bottom of your screen. And please limit your comments to three minutes and voluntarily state your name for the record. And you'll be asked to unmute yourself before speaking. So public comment is now, is now open for anybody who would like to comment.
Nicely done.
Okay, we do have one. Jane McInnes, go ahead, go ahead and mute yourself.
Thank you. I just wanted to compliment you guys. I spent 35 years in an industry that is prone to workers' compensation issues and problems and property management, maintenance people, pool workers, people who climb onto roofs and, and chase dogs across the lawn. And I have to say, this is one of the most impressive demonstrations of safe work practices and good governing policies that I have ever seen. It is extremely impressive what you have done. $12,000, that's, that's almost nothing for a city this size. So you are greatly to be complimented and all of the department heads who I'm sure are working very hard for safe work practices within their departments. The cumulative effect of this is, is amazing. So congratulations.
Thank you for your comments, Jane. And I, and I would have to agree, agree there that, you know, that the savings looks great. People aren't being injured, and also goes right to the bottom line. And that, you know, that's, that's just as important as all the other places that we try and save money and pinch pennies. It's happening right here as well. So thank you very much, Dory, for your report. Appreciate it. And Dave, did you have any further comments?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Then we're gonna move on now to public comment. Brief, non-agendized items. The, this portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. The state law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action on the city council under specific circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks or individuals on individuals or make comments which are slanderous, which may invade an individual's personal privacy. Starting off. Starting off, Cleve, on written communication.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You do have one item of written communication from Jennifer Chapman requesting an opportunity to make a presentation. You have that, those in your packet. My recommendation is that you consider that during future agenda items, whether or not you want to look at that further. So that's all for, for now.
All right. Then we'll take that up. If anybody chooses to, we'll take that up during future agenda items. Moving on to oral communication, I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Connell.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas. We will open public comment for item 7.2. Again, these are for items that are not on the agenda. And we will start with, let's see here, Ruth Michelson, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you so very much. I just had two brief things I wanted to bring up. One was just a question about, we'd had that conversation at the last meeting about the news, et cetera. And then there was the committee of two that were to go away and come back. And the way I heard the motion was that they were to come back to the next meeting, which frankly, I thought was sort of a quick turnaround, but that's the way I heard the motion. And I see that they're not on the agenda for today. And I also do not see that they're on the agenda at the end where it talks about future upcoming items. So I was just curious about the timeframe for super, city council member Taylor, Vice Mayor Taylor, and, and the city council member Borelli to come back, just wanting to know the timeframe. The other thing I wanted to mention for just a moment, because it just keeps coming up, is the Placerville Downtown Association. There was a letter that was submitted in the last meeting, and I'm hoping that all of the city council members took time to read that letter. It was also printed in the Mountain Democrat for, for wide readership. And look, I think I would really, really like for the city council members to sit down with the board of the PDA. If you have questions, please go to the source and please talk to the board. There's just been too much insinuation that's not factual. Any organization is going to have some disgruntled members, and many people who call to speak and who are disgruntled aren't even members. So for whatever reason, there's been a lot of bad press. PDA does represent 38. When the last calendar year represented 38 merchants, they always sought our input for actions taken, not always, but the big actions taken that you're aware of, which involve city council. They asked us our opinion, and it's not some rogue group. And, and I'm sorry that it's been represented in that manner. And just for the, for fairness, please review the letter that was submitted to you in the last meeting. And also, please, sit down with the PDA before you do anything about taking PD off of any boards. It's just not, it's, I just don't think it's warranted nor called for. So appreciate you following through on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth.
Okay, we will now take public comment from Sue Rodman. Go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Sue.
Okay. Fire season is officially over, and now is the opportune time to get serious about hazardous vegetation removal. Please, let's clean up our beloved hometown. We know what needs to be done. And if you need more information, you can contact the Fire Safe Council. They have information to use for getting your property fire resistant. Also, El Dorado Fire has a checklist to use, and they will come to your property and let you know what needs to be done, or if your efforts are sufficient to protect your home and family. Now is the time to take care of our properties, to protect ourselves and our neighbors. Also, Placerville has an enforcement officer who can tell you what you need to do to be in compliance with the city's ordinance. If you have neighbors who are ignoring our vegetation ordinance, you can call the city enforcement officer. Your very life may depend on it. Remember Paradise? Fire season will be back before you know it. And for city council, now is the time to contact those large property owners that still need to reduce their hazardous vegetation loads. They need to be put on notice to either clean it up or pay the bill for the city to contract the work. Without enforcement, the vegetation ordinance is not effective. And without attention to enforcement, you put all of us at risk. Thank you.
Thank you very much for those comments, Sue.
We'll now take public comment from caller with the last three digits, 525. Go ahead and then mute yourself.
Hi, this is Leo Bennett, Koshon. I'm at our beautiful bell tower. It'll be nice when we can start having meetings in person. I just really wanted to thank you. Your staff showed me the proclamation. It's just, it just came out so nice and shared that it's going to be, you know, kind of out in the public at the town hall and city hall, police station. I just think it's wonderful, and I'm hoping that you, you're, you're a great example with that proclamation. And perhaps you can try to get the Board of Supervisors and other entities to sign on. And then secondly, I'm urging, when you get around a future agenda item, that you do bring back what you were going to talk about, but you know, I'd rather get it done well, which is the ongoing conversation, what that format is going to look like. So I'm looking forward to the community to hopefully be able to start. And I'm bringing back an idea that I had heard from our wonderful past mayor, which is trying to use the, the city website. There's examples at, or other cities where we could start gathering some comments at least, which might help the team that's coming up with the format. Thank you for listening, and I'll go back to enjoying the bell tower. Take care.
Thank you, Liam.
Now taking public comment from Jonathan Gainsborough.
Hello, Jonathan.
Good evening, Mayor, and congratulations on mayorship and good evening, council. First of all, what a wonderful report with the Workman's Comp. That's just great. One year ago, I was reading through my diary and looking at the blessings of the Lord. And I think I'll just throw a verse or two in here from Psalm 116, 116, verse seven. Return unto thy rest, O my soul, for the Lord has dealt bountifully with thee. For thou hast delivered my soul from death, mine eyes from tears, and my feet from falling. What shall I render unto the Lord for all his benefits to me? I will take up the cup of salvation and call upon the name of the Lord. We all are so blessed to live in a Norman Rockwell, like Placerville. Just, it is a beautiful, beautiful place. One year ago, I looked in my journal amongst many other blessings, and I saw that we had a reporter come up from National Public Radio to interview the homeless and also to put some attention on the non-constitutional anti-camping ordinance that was in process of being passed. It needs to be lined up with Martin Boise. But I'm glad that we didn't come to litigation or to pugilistics with that. Friday night in Sacramento, they had a candlelight march and the, it was a memorial for the 1,200 or 1,500 homeless that have died in the last decade. We could say, well, what is that to us? But today, one of the Placerville homeless named Eric was found near a creek dead. And we will have more people dying this winter if we don't face the homeless situation. I'm looking at the front page of Monday, February 1, Mountain Democrat, California's oldest paper. The title is "The Deep Pit of Homelessness." I know that you all, as superior, intelligent, and compassionate human beings, you care about the homeless. What can we do? First of all, Sacramento has passed an emergency homelessness housing crisis, and therefore they have okayed tiny houses up to 80 people in a, in a location across the city. They've also opened up safe parking, especially for women and children, in two of their parking garages, not just one night as a warning center, but until the end of March. We've got 530 homeless children in Sacramento, according to the school board. Let's, let's shelter the homeless. And I know my time is running out here, but let's take better care of the homeless than we do of the animals that we have an ordinance to protect them from the rain and the snow.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Let's do our best, and God bless you all. Thank you so much.
You too. Thank you.
Jane McInnes, go ahead.
Thank you. I want to follow up on that same thought, actually. I'm asking you to check into the use of our large parking garage downtown for safe overnight parking of homeless who are living in their cars. Many of them are women and children. As Pastor Gainsborough said, the city of Sacramento is open to parking garages for the rest of the winter. I think protection for women and children should be our highest priority as they are at the gravest risk as part of the homeless population. It's, it's easy to look at an ideal, like allowing overnight use of our parking garage and say, we can't leave them unsupervised. It's too dangerous. We need to have a presence. They'll turn it into a pigsty. We have our Stars volunteers. We have civilians, some with military background, some with military police experience. Let's seek them out and deputize those that are willing to donate some time to the city. We have ordinary citizens willing to do some cleaning. We have the Moore Organization able to do some of this work if the city will pay them. I will be the first to volunteer to sit on a planning committee to get such a project off the ground. And if necessary, I'll volunteer for morning pickup patrol. Let's be creative and keep these most vulnerable people safe once the sun goes down. God's word says, ask and it shall be given. God's word encourages God's children to be persistent, to pray without ceasing, to keep knocking on the door, to continually petition for the needs of the helpless. We have faith in our city leaders. We know that you're trying to meet the many needs, large and small, that go into running a city. We want you to know that we will not cease to bring this problem to you, both the issues of sanitation and of safety. Both are urgently needed, especially for the children among this large group of the helpless among us. Please, please keep this topic in the forefront of everybody's mind. Keep discussing it with one another again and again. Don't take the easy no for an answer. We have a long way to go between now and a functioning navigation center. We cannot sit on our hands and do nothing for those who need our help. And I just want to share with you the first verse of Isaiah 40. Comfort, comfort in my people, says your God. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Appreciate the comments.
Jen C., go ahead.
I don't see the unmute. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, Jen.
Oh, you can. Oh, great. Get these devices. Thank you. And I guess I just want to say, I, I did invite a few of the city staff, and I think, I think everybody else on the council is on the email list for the Placerville History Channel session four to five on Thursday regarding the work that's going on in Old City Hall. You know, it's obviously a lot of scaffolding, lots of equipment, and lots of interest in what's happening with those buildings. And appreciate Terry Zeller kind of recapping a little bit of, of what's going on, you know, with shoring up the wall and the roofing and the fact that the Arts Council or Arts and Culture Eldorado will eventually be responsible for any kind of restoration of the wall, the brick wall. But anyway, you know, we do have some, some different folks that have been involved in taking a look at it and have some things to share. So would love to have, you know, city council, city staff presence on there with us talking about that on Thursday from four to five. Old City Hall, of course, is one of many buildings in this historic district. And, you know, that is part of the, the reason for the request of, you know, just a presentation to, to look at this Clay Street Bridge project from the historic preservation perspective. I, I know we look a lot at, at just the, you know, the traffic issues and, and, and different other aspects a lot. But I don't think we've really quite put the whole historic scene, you know, kind of in context there. Just, it's just another way of looking at the project to, you know, kind of consider it, I think, most fully. So I just hope that, I hope that will be possible to, to have a little time on an agenda because I think seeing it, you know, as a series of slides, and I did share that with you. So hopefully you saw that in your email to get a sense of what it is and can certainly have a chance to see, see it before it would be presented at the council meeting. And then I guess I just also wanted to say, I, I, I think it's just an oversight, but I did not yet get a reimbursement check for the $400 appeal filing fee for the Cottonwood Four and Sixth appeal that would have been planning commission that ended up being canceled. So just a heads up on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
No other public comments, Mr. Mayor?
All right. Thank you very much, Regina. There was one, there was one question that came up twice, and that is the, the news in our committee meeting. I know that, that council member Borelli and Vice Mayor Taylor have met, I think, twice. And so they are in the process of doing their work. And as soon as they come up with something they can bring back to the council in the form of a recommendation, they'll certainly be on that following agenda. And with that, we will go ahead and move on to our consent calendar. Let's see, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote unless any member of the council wishes to remove any item per session. The reading of a full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. Does anybody have any comments regarding any of the items on this encounter? All right, see and no hands. I do have one comment. I know that, let's see, where is it? So Ellen Yatakimo has been on our El Dorado County Community Action Council for many years, and she stood up to, to run one more year. And I just want to express my appreciation for her efforts. I don't know if she's on here listening or not, but, but she has, she has faithfully served on that committee for quite some time. And I encourage you to look it up, but that is the, what is that quote? The El Dorado County Community Action Council. And it's just one more pointy for the, for the mayor to make. And I just wanted to express my appreciation along with all the others. So, yes.
Dennis, real quick, I would like to, one of the callers talked about having the Moore Workshop cleaning our garage. I'd just like to tell her that we, they do clean our garage right now. So just matter of interest. They do a great job.
Thank you. Thank you, Patty. Without any further comments, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public call. Any consent calendar.
Comment is open for the consent calendar? We'll start with caller 857. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. I was actually trying to get in on public comment, but looks like we're past that. I didn't hear the, the mayor say that public comment was closed. So anyway, never mind.
Thank you.
No other public comments, Mr. Mayor?
All right. Thank you. Let's bring it back to motion.
I'll move.
Second.
All right. First and second, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Borelli?
Aye.
Councilmember No?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa? Vice Mayor Taylor? Is that an I?
You're muted. Sorry. Aye.
And Mayor Thomas?
That'll be an I for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Since there are no items pulled for consent calendar, we'll move on to ordinances. Item 10.1 was tabled, so we'll move on to item 10.2. Consider changing our city council meeting time from 6:00 PM to 5:00 PM and introduce an ordinance for the city council of the, of the city council, the city council, Placerville, amending section. of the city council, the city council, Plasterville, amending section one dash four dash three of the Plasterville Municipal Code to do that. I'm going to turn this over to Cleveland.
Good evening, again, mayor and council. Yes, this item actually in two thousand thirteen, this came before the council in a similar fashion to look at moving the meeting from seven o'clock to six o'clock, and that was done at that time. The the issues are kind of the same that you have now. One of the issues we should be aware of is that if we move to five o'clock start time, that will move your close session time back to four thirty or four o'clock, depending on the length of our close session that we think we have. So what that's one thing that you should consider in the process. The other thing is making it available for as many public, you know, the majority of public that want to actually comment on items, observe the meeting. Obviously, the meeting you can watch any time because it is recorded. And the next day after the meeting, it is there and available. But as far as public comment, making it available for people during the meeting. There's some concern that five o'clock maybe too early. People may not be off work, et cetera. However, many jurisdictions, as you know, for example, the County Board of Supervisors, their meetings are primarily all during the day. And the people that they'll want to speak seem to find that opportunity. There's always the opportunity to provide written comments that are always provided to the council also. And with the current Zoom format, it allows people to participate remotely, which I think gives more of an opportunity for more people to participate. The question has come up, well, what happens when we go back to live meetings? That's a good question. We we think and are actually exploring on a staff level at least the possibility that those live meetings could also be over a Zoom format through our current camera system with some update, good data technology that may allow us to have this opportunity to still accept public comments if the council desires at that time could accept them through a virtual format over Zoom, even when we go back to live meetings. So those are just some of the things that that we looked at. If the council desired to move forward with this, the action would be to waive the first reading and introduce the ordinance tonight. And then if done so, it would come back to you on your next meeting for adoption and would take place thirty days from that date. So we're still about a month and a half away from when it would actually take place if you wanted to move forward. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Any questions for Cleveland at this time? All right, Karen.
I just wanted to kind of check with our department heads and see if in earlier time would work for them or if, you know, they want time to eat dinner before going straight from a workday into, you know, a lengthy meeting or.
I will. I will say, and I invite any of them that differs with this opinion to to come on. But I know in my discussions, we discussed it at our staff meeting level. And I think pretty much unanimously, they felt that an earlier start time was favorable for them.
Okay.
Finishes their day hopefully a little bit earlier and and they can get home afterwards. So.
All right. Yes, Patty.
I think another reason that we're considering this is that our meetings have just they've really been very lengthy this year, and it makes it difficult for everybody, just like Cleveland was saying, not only for us, but for our staff especially, because they're usually at work, you know. We're in our homes, so it makes it a little more palpable. But I I think the the late hours of our meetings are something to consider.
Yes, Councilmember No.
I just wanted to make a comment because I brought this forward, and this is the only format where we could really discuss it. You know, when I first started attending meetings, they started at seven and they were typically over by nine or nine thirty. I would love to see a meeting over by nine and nine thirty, and I don't think I've seen one in a very, very long time. And these already start an hour earlier. You know, my thought was, especially with Zoom and everything, we have much more public participation, which is great. If you look at starting the meeting at five, like right now, we're at seven, seven o'clock, and we're just getting to discussion items. If we move the meeting to five, then the discussion items will be more like at six o'clock. So I don't really think we'll be stopping the public from participating because you have an hour of, you know, consent calendar proclamations and things we usually get through. And by not holding the meetings until midnight, hopefully will allow people to better participate also because I I can't really see a whole lot of participation after ten o'clock. I think we maybe have one or two people, but we seem to lose a lot of people actually after nine o'clock. So those were kind of my thoughts, and I just wanted to bring it up for discussion and and see what everybody thought.
Thank you, Jackie. Here's Mayor Sarah Goza.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I I just would agree. I mean, I think, you know, we certainly saw this last year, and, you know, it's continued in where, you know, Councilmember knows correct. I mean, we're going to midnight in some cases, past midnight in in some cases. And it's just the level of discourse, I think, you know, once you get past ten o'clock, just sort of, I think fades on the natural anyways, when you've been sitting in a meeting for five, six hours. For us, I think as well, it's not not only just for the public. And so I do think that level of discourse is better served by an earlier time so that you're not going into the, you know, the late, late hours of the evening on really on on issues that are, you know, very germane to the community important. And and we should be able to flesh those out as opposed to trying to push through some of those because we know we're getting late. And we maybe we had an agenda item that took a long time, and now we're just trying to push through four or five other matters because, you know, of how late it's become. So I I I think it's a good idea. You know, it's one of those things where if it, for some reason, it's not working, you know, we always have the ability to to change it. But I think it's something that that we should try. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I I would have to say that I think we're going to take a punishment on one end or the other. And I think starting earlier, kind of is less punishment than staying late. And I can I agree with Councilwoman Sarah Goza where I think that, you know, I I feel the sense of urgency of just pushing items through, and I have to force myself to slow it down as it gets later in the evening. You know, when I'm talking later, it's like past ten o'clock, eleven o'clock, and we're dealing with the important issues, sometimes millions of dollars regarding the cities that, you know, the city finances for construction contracts and things like that. And I think that, and I and I think for for that sake, it's important to, I'd rather have it on the front end and be a little bit earlier and give people the opportunity to to chime in there and maybe stay a little bit later. Because it's true, we can see who's on and who's not. And at at nine thirty, two people, maybe. So I'm going to open this up for public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public comment is open for item ten point two. This is the consideration for changing the city council meeting time. We'll start with Kathy Lishman. Go ahead.
Hello, having served on the council, and when I was first on the council meeting, started at seven thirty, and then we changed them to seven, and then you changed, then they were changed to six. But I feel that if you start at five o'clock, it makes it difficult for someone who isn't self-employed or retired to run for city council. If you work for someone else, I'm not sure how. I think there's a lot of people to think about. I would say if you're going to change it, go to five thirty, just because it gives people a chance if they get off work at five. I just think there's a lot of people to consider. And I think that the meetings have gone longer because of a lot of things, but because they're on Zoom. So maybe when we're back to having meetings in Town Hall again, maybe the meetings wouldn't go so long. So I I just feel five o'clock has a lot of ways of eliminating people. And and I understand how hard it is for staff to have worked all day and go to meetings. But I just think it's something to think about. People running for city council and also the public attending the meetings. I would suggest, I know at the beginning of the meeting, you all have to go over things that you've done recently or in the last week or something, maybe put those at the end. I think those maybe, I think some of the reports at the end about what's going on with the Transportation Commission or what's going on with the roads or things like that are of real public interest. But maybe council members going to of ribbon cutting isn't as important to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabby.
Sue Rodman, go ahead.
Okay, I remember when the meeting started at seven, and then we moved it to six, and I thought that was a good idea. And there were people then who felt like it was very difficult to get in time from work. And if you go to five, I think Kathy has a real point there that you're and so does Dennis about you're going to eat it on one end or the other. But I I think the six o'clock works well. I think what the problem is, is we cram too much stuff into the meetings. And we need to kind of put some limits on it and say, okay, when we get to ten o'clock, cut it off. It's time to go home. Everything else can be left for another meeting. And the other problem with that is a lot of times the way you've structured this is that the things that are contracts and have to be handled in a particular timeframe get left to the very end of the meeting, all the contracts for doing roadwork and in other things for the city get left to the very end. I wouldn't say we need to move those up to be the first things considered and then put some of the rest of these things that really don't have to be done in this meeting towards the end so that when we get to these horrible lengthy meetings, we can cut it off and say the the rest of it's going to get left for the next meeting. So that's my, that's my two cents worth.
Thank you, Sue.
Caller eight five seven, go ahead.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, Michael.
Okay, so amen to Kathy Lishman's comments. That was where my thoughts were going to is six P M. Works. Don't break it. At the most, bump it up to five thirty. The city already has, because you have to think about the people trying to get off work, get home, get in the house, fire up the computer, everything else. And also, I hadn't thought about the people trying to run for city council. You would start to exclude a lot of people that were employed because it would be hard for them to ask their employer to say, I need every Tuesday to get off, you know, two hours early or hour early, whatever it is. And the city already has an ordinance of a ten P M. Rule. So at ten P M. On a council meeting, y'all talk amongst yourselves, take a vote and say, are we going to continue or not? Or what items will we consider? And I really also thought you need to just reorganize the agenda, keep the meeting at six P M. Reorganize the agenda, bump all that early stuff, the proclamations and yada yada, what you guys did last week. Bump that to the end of the meeting. Really, no one is interested. Put the important stuff up front like Sue Rodman said. So keep the meeting at six, at the most five thirty, reorganize the agenda, put the important stuff up front at the start of the meeting. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Tammy Danes, go ahead.
Hello, council members. I do feel your pain. We've been up many Tuesday nights with you guys till ten, eleven o'clock at night, which is very torturous. But the things that are talked about through the agendas, the agendas are very important. I do agree with Sue and some of the other people that spoke. We do need to keep this at six o'clock. I do agree that we do need to have a time limit, ten o'clock, that's up to you guys. And I don't know how you guys could like, you guys are overwhelmed with everything that's on your plate, and I totally get it. But I would not change it any earlier because we, the people, would love to be a part of all the council meetings. And thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Jane McInnes, go ahead.
Thank you. I wasn't planning to speak on this, and I listened to several people talk, and I think they've each got a good piece of the puzzle. I agree with Sue Rodman. I understand that there are things you have to do, looking at contracts, looking at change orders, making sure that the business of the city is being taken care of. There are also people who, and I'm one of them, who is always going to be addressing a non-ashenda item until the day that, you know, the trumpet sound and and a navigation center is on the agenda. But what would be wrong with starting it at five o'clock and handling the contract issues, the things that you guys need to talk to each other about, need to take some staff reports and assigning a time for public comment, maybe at six o'clock for twenty minutes? Allowing anybody who needs to use that to go home, fire up their computer or to arrive, maybe take a five minute break at six o'clock and let people come in and get seated and have public comment for twenty minutes and then go on with with the agenda. Just a reshuffling would allow you to start at five. And I think finish, I'd love to see nine thirty be the end of it. But I think you can do it. Anybody who is working at five o'clock, they have their smartphone. But if they don't have to hustle to be part of public comment, then they can get on their phone, they can get on their computer and listen to you guys talk about road repair for fifteen minutes while they get ready to be present. I think this could work. So that's that's it.
Thank you for the vote of confidence, Jane.
There's no other public comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Let's go ahead and bring it back for conversation and discussion here. Yes, Karen.
Um, so I'm, you know, I'm I'm kind of on the fence with this. I agree with everything that my colleagues have said about, you know, the need to move it up. And I also agree with Kathy Lishman's comments. And I've got to say, they they really ring true to me because if we start at four, it will be hard for me to get there just with the baby exchange with my husband when he gets off work. So I'll make it work if that's what you choose to do. And I don't want you to feel bad about that, but the baby might be coming to close sessions. So that might happen.
That's okay.
All right, any other comments?
Yeah, I was just gonna, you know, some people commented, you know, we need to shorten the agendas and stop at ten o'clock or whatever. And what that really means in order to keep city business going, that means that we will move to weekly meetings instead of every other meetings. There's, I mean, we can't just say, ah, we'll get to it when we get to it. There's, you know, a lot that needs to move forward and get done. So that's, you know, you know, if someone wants to get elected and gets elected to council and says, hey, we got to bump it back, you can always bump it back to accommodate those people. You know, I just just wanted to let the public know council is is a lot more than Tuesday evenings, and and you're going to have a hard time anyways. You know, communicating with your staff and going to all the meetings is also going to be difficult. If you have a very rigid nine to five that that doesn't have any flexibility, this is going to be a hard job for you to have. And that's just the reality of it. I'm finding, I spent a lot of time during the day. But, you know, if everyone wants to try five thirty, I I'm open to that, too. I just wanted to have the discussion to, you know, try to tighten things up and make it better for everyone. And oh, somebody mentioned pushing the public back or having the public comment time specific. I I'm not sure how that would flow in an agenda, but I did notice that some other city councils pushed their public comment to the end of the meeting. You know, that way, you know, my first city council meeting, we had three hours of public comment. You know, we didn't get to the business until nine o'clock, which is difficult to concentrate in in everything when everyone's getting tired and everything. So, you know, I'm not opposed to rearranging the agenda where we get the business taken care of first and then push off, you know, like they said, things that aren't time sensitive and public. and public comment to the end. So maybe there's a couple of things we could do to structure this better.
Yes, Councilwoman Borelli.
There was a time that we did try that, we put public comment near the end and that was, the folks did not like that. So we ended up, you know, putting it back to the first part of the meeting because they said it was too late and a lot of them didn't want to stay up that late. So this is what exactly what we're addressing right now. So I honestly don't know what the answer is, but the reason our agenda that we've been so long is that we're I think Zoom has been a success in giving so many of the community members a chance to talk and it's become very popular. And that's what we want input from the, the public. So we're kind of, it's like, okay, what did we create here? You know, we created these meetings that are going till midnight. And so I don't know. We, we don't want to put a, we were already limiting people to three minutes, but yet there's just a lot of folks that want to, you know, talk now, which I certainly welcome. So it's kind of a catch 22 here that we're involved in. But I really would like to start our, I'd like to see how it works, see if we can't make it work. And then if we get too many objections and see that it's not working, we can always, like Michael said, we can always go back, you know, we can always change it. But I'm particularly thinking about staff, too.
Thank you. Councilor Sarah goes.
Yeah, I would just kind of echo what everybody said here. And it's true. I mean, I hadn't thought about, you know, somebody running until Kathy had mentioned that, but to, to council member knows statement is, we all know, I mean, it is, this is like the, the least of what you do almost when you're at the meetings on a Tuesday night of council meeting. There's plenty of meetings beforehand with staff when you're reviewing your packet. And if you're not reviewing, I mean, if you're not taking time on, on a Tuesday to review your packet, I hope you did a lot of homework on Monday night or some other time to know what you're doing. So it's, yeah, if you have a really rigid nine to five schedule, it will be a challenge to do this. You have to be able to, to make those sacrifices, to have the time to be able to do this, to do this job in the right way. Otherwise, you're doing really just the bare minimum as a, as a council member. I'm certainly open as well, you know, at 5:30 seems like a splitting difference. I do think it's, it's in the best, I do think it's in the best use of our time to go back a little bit because we have had so much work. And, you know, perhaps like I mentioned and Patty said as well, we can always, you know, tweak it later if we need to. I just think it helps the level of conversation as well when you're not trying to think through million dollar projects, as the mayor mentioned at, you know, 11 o'clock at night. And knowing you're just trying to push through it at this point because you know, it's really late and you know, you just listened to three hours of public testimony on something and you know, it's just the reality, that is for me. And I, and I know, you know, when I was, when I was mayor, I had to, you know, face that same challenge. So it's, it is definitely real. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. You know, I did like Jane McInnes's suggestion of moving our less interested issues further up in the agenda. If we're going to start a meeting earlier to get those through, because most people don't spend much time thinking about the on-ramp for for Western Placerville Interchange 2.2. So so I think that there's something to be said, and to the people who talk about us adjusting the agenda, a lot of thought. And every, over the years has gone into how we can manipulate the agenda in such a way that meets the needs of the community. And it seems like anytime we move one to the next or move one up or down, it, it, it has a, it has a dual effect where some people really like it and some people really don't. And it's every one of them, there's a plus and there's a plus and a downside to everyone. So with that said, I'm open to hearing a motion.
I'll make a motion to move it to five o'clock.
I'll second it.
All right, we got a first and second. Any further discussion on that item? Yes.
I would just say, I mean, I thought Ms. McInnes would have a good point in terms of maybe a set time with, or with a public comment. But I also think in something, you know, I would defer to the mayor on, and I mean this as a, on a rolling basis of if we know we have an issue that's going to have potentially hours of, of public comments on a, say, a 7.2 that we, maybe we look at, you know, changing at that, for that meeting, you know, a different time to allow for the maximum amount of people to be able to, to speak that day. So that you're, it's not always going to be that way because we know we don't have every meeting that's going to have that level of public interaction on a public comment item or on an issue item. But on those that do, that we have that flexibility just to move that public comment time around. I don't know if you need a motion for that, but I just thought the discretion of the mayor to work with the city manager to do that.
On the scheduling of the internal parts of the agenda, yes.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Borelli.
Could we, maybe at this time, ask Cleve his thoughts on that? I'm not sure that we can move that around. Can we, Cleve? I mean, is it giving enough notice to folks if we, you know, start changing times like that?
Well, I think that one of my thoughts was we would, we would notice it well ahead of time. So we would get that information out and I think I hadn't thought of it. You know, we have done the thing where we move public comment to the end or to the beginning. I think there is a way, it'll take a little work on our part to figure out how we do it. But I think the idea of perhaps simply stating public comment will be at six o'clock or as soon thereafter as we finish the previous agenda item that we may be talking about. That may be a distinct possibility that we can work on. And then the public comment part doesn't change. My thought is, you know, we do some of the, the business items, including perhaps consent calendar before that and then get to see where we're at. As you note, on the Board of Supervisors meetings and many other jurisdictions, they have timed certain items and they plan on that, that way. And they move things around or go through their agenda until they have to stop and go to that time certain item. Then they go back to that agenda. So I think there are some possibilities there based on what you've talked about that we can make some changes and work with the mayor and find ways to make that work if that's your desire.
All right. Thank you, Cleve. Yes, Vice Mayor Taylor.
You know, another thought is if we have an item that we are anticipating three hours of public comment or something, just to make that a special meeting. And then we wouldn't need, you know, the whole staff to, to be there for that, most likely. So.
Sure.
All right, we have a first and a second. Any further discussion? Yes.
Just, just clear, so that the motion, just to clarify, is to introduce the ordinance and waive the, the reading of the. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. So Ms. O'Connell, could we get a roll call?
Councilmember Borelli.
Hi.
Councilmember Now.
Hi.
Councilmember Sarah Gussa. Vice Mayor Taylor. Mayor Thomas.
Hi.
All right. Thank you very much. And moving on with, let's see, we have no public hearing. So moving on to discussion, action items number 12.1. Consider request by the El Dorado Wine Association for a letter of support for grant funding to provide signage at the Ray Lawyer Drive interchange on Highway 50. And Mr. Morse. You're muted.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this item actually, in a, in another manner, came before the council in September of 2018 when the El Dorado Wine Association requested, made a request to modify the Welcome to Placerville sign located here on Highway 50 in town to add a fixture that would state El Dorado Wine Country, Welcome to El Dorado Wine Country, or along those lines. That was reviewed at the time and basically in, it was not accepted. And staff was kind of directed to go back and work with El Dorado Wine Association to see if there were other options that could be considered and looked at. We did that. They actually came up with the idea, we looked into it to see if it could possibly work to locate a new sign, to construct a new sign at the Ray Lawyer Interchange. Now, I'm going to share a screen here of a map that will show that location and this is in your packet. So you can see here, this is where the sign would be. This is the new, this is 40 Road and the new 40 Road realigned, the new parking lot. And as you can see, this is the yellow right here, the loop is the most recent approval that you've done in awarding the bid for Western Placerville Interchange Phase 2.2, which is the eastbound on-ramp. So they looked at that site, as you know, that's a rather large hill right now. Baron Hill, just dirt. And there will be some adjustment to that as, as they do this project. You have questions about that. Ms. Neves can, can answer those questions. So they presented to us, and I'm going to stop this and bring up another drawing. This is only a conceptual drawing of what they thought could work at that location. And in a minute, I'll have Lexi Boger, who has presented this to us, come on and talk more about what their plans are for this. But this is what they would envision or an example of somewhat what it may be. There could be changes to this, obviously, but that what they would like to see. They, they applied for a grant a little over a year ago. They just got notification recently, I believe, that they moved on to the next round of that grant. There's more than one round and, and they have the opportunity now to submit additional documentation for their grant. And at this time, they're asking that the city provide a letter of support for the grant. So what count, staff is asking tonight is for you to make the decision, do you want to support this? There's two ways you could do that. You could support the, the grant application and support the sign concept as is. Or the second option would be simply to support the grant application with the understanding that we would come back and talk more about the actual sign, design, approval, et cetera. If they are awarded the grant. The location probably will not change. And that may affect how they do their grant, but I'm assuming the location would primarily be in this area. But the, the actual sign content, the, the design, et cetera, could come back with recommendations that we can provide on that. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to, oh, before I turn it over to Lexi, I just want to mention that the, our recommendation or my recommendation to the council this time is that we simply sign the letter of interest or support, but not necessarily approve the sign design, et cetera, at this time. And we can come back and discuss that and negotiate that with them at a later date. With that, I would like to, if Mayor, if you want to turn it over to Lexi to talk to this, and then we can turn it back to the council.
That sounds great. If we can bring Lexi on.
Hi, everyone. Mayor Thomas, council members, staff, thank you so much for giving the time to Edwah to consider this. And so I know I've heard all the talk about interest of time for these meetings, so I'm going to try to keep this very concise. And my thought with what to present to you guys is to maybe mostly address what might be overarching concerns or maybe just some background and clarifications over this stuff so that you can just have sort of a broad picture idea of the proposal. So basically, we are in a CDFA grant application for a specialty crop block grant. So CDFA is concerned with granting money that is going to help to make California specialty crops more competitive. So that would be your wine grapes. And so they are really kind of concerned with agriculture. We're asking for $380,000 for this sign project, which includes this Placerville Ray Lawyer Drive sign, but also has built in some funding for a county-wide expansion of our sign program. So we're also envisioning smaller versions of this at Gateways to the County. And I don't know if you noticed on there, it's, it says El Dorado Wine Country, but then it's established 1849 on the side. And so one of the first concerns, I think we, thank you for that, that we heard when we proposed to be on the Welcome to Placerville sign. And I'd like to preface this by saying, I just think we, that was a place to start, but the wisdom of trying to put those concepts together on the Placerville sign was not a good idea. And I think it is much better to have this, you know, as a separate thing. But one of the concerns that was brought up in that early phase was that when we say El Dorado Wine Country, people think that we're promoting the county versus Placerville and that there's some confusion between El Dorado and Placerville. And is that, why are we doing that? So I just wanted to give a little background. In terms of agriculture, what we are in is called an AVA and it's an American viticultural area. And our legal name is El Dorado. So the reason why we are saying Welcome to El Dorado Wine Country isn't about El Dorado County. It really is that, that is our legal AVA. So when you see bottles of wine that say El Dorado, there's a lot of TTB regulation that that's why you have to have that name on there. So really, we're branded to that as an agricultural growing zone. Our El Dorado AVA is also not the county. It is, it goes from 1,200,000 feet up to 35 and stretches the band of the county in that growing zone. And so the AVA of El Dorado is actually smaller than the county. What, what has attracted us to Placerville for the sign location is that when you look at our geographic AVA location, Placerville is literally dead center, the heart of this growing region. So as a, the idea here is to have a gateway city, a jumping off point for people. And we can certainly brand to or partner with any city along the way or somewhere within the county, but there just really is sort of a poetic mist to that this really is geographically, Placerville is the geographic heart of the, of our growing region. So that's how we are here in this conversation for that. So that's just a little explanation about why El Dorado, why we can't say Placerville Wine Country. Because that's not a legal term that we can really use as a wine region. And another thing that came up when we started this with the Placerville sign was, you know, just sort of the talk of the historical nature of Placerville and how the sign and just the whole vibe of Placerville, that we need to be cognizant of our, our history and what the character of that in town is, is. And I don't know if people know this, but this would be a great part of education for tourists when they come, is that that the wine industry is actually one of the original industries of the wine region. So our first, there we go. My dad just gave me this this morning. He's like, you got to show him this picture. So basically, the first vineyards in El Dorado County that were planted were planted in 1849. So miners came here to mine and right off the bat, they needed wine to drink. So James Marshall had a vineyard. This here, to give you some perspective, this, the old guy up here in the front is the founder of the Boger Winery property. So that's our property looking towards town. And I think if you guys look to the middle and to the left of the upper part, you'll see Big Cut. So there's Big Cut and the Little Valley, right in that background, that's the town of Placerville. Placerville proper is there, but if you look at the hilltops and ridges from this foreground all the way to that valley, every single hill is planted and they're planted in grapevines. So during the gold rush up until about 1870, that was probably the peak of planting, we had 2,000 acres in wine producing vineyards. We were the third largest western western states producing wine region just behind Napa and LA at that time. So because Placerville, and I'm just trying to give you guys a background of how does wine historically pair with Placerville? How can we make this story of why Placerville is an important center to this? Is that Placerville was the hub of the population at the time because of the gold rush and a lot of immigrants came to do, came here for the gold rush, but they brought their tradition of winemaking. And so by 1870, we had over 2,000 acres in producing fruit. And after prohibition, that kind of diminished across the state because that was how that was. But to give you guys an idea that this isn't a new industry to the region, that this is actually one that's been here the whole time, is that we have just recently, in the last 10 years, gotten back up to over 2,000 acres. So the industry you see today is about the size that it was back then. So we haven't even gone beyond the vibrancy of what the wine industry was back in that day. So there's just a little historical perspective because I do know that residents of Placerville and. and people who are concerned with what the character of the town is, is presenting are very concerned that we're always sort of bringing in that historical piece and that we don't lose that historic character. So I just wanted to give a little historic, um, perspective there, that I think this is something we can tie in in a really lovely way and just educate people on, um, how important this industry has been to the region from the get-go of, of our region. Um, and that's why we have the established in, um, 1849 right there on that big sign. Um, a little bit about the materials of the sign. It was designed by, um, uh, Charlie Downs, who many of you know, who's just brilliant and it's beautiful. And the stone is recommended to be that native stone that we see from the quarry here out towards Pleasant Valley. A lot of our old buildings, like the Chinese brothel, has this, that yellow tinge. So we want to bring in the history, um, with, by using the local stone, and then we'll plant, um, with real live grapevines on there and probably use a really traditional varietal-like mission, which is what would have been planted here in the early 1800s. Um, so just to jump on off from that, um, that was the history of it. I think what we need to talk about is, you know, it, we want to be tied to our history, but how are we going to move forward? And I know that we've just been hit terribly hard by COVID. A lot of our businesses have. And that's one of the big reasons why we started going after these grants was just, how is our industry going to be able to, one, survive and drive through this? So, um, we are not, we're not trying to ask for a give me with the sign. I think the sign will be a huge benefit to the wine region, but we also see this as being part of our, um, history of being in a symbiotic relationship with agritourism, geotourism, outdoor recreation, hospitality, restaurants, shopping, all of these industries, which are very important to Placerville and to Eldorado County. We have a, as I think many of those business people will tell you, is we just have this reciprocal relationship. Um, our consumers are not people who drive up, go to wineries and leave. You know, they are by character, someone who's interested in restaurants for sure, because the food and wine pairing, but they want to stay, they want to have a quaint experience, they want authenticity. So, um, we have a 50-year-long established reciprocal relationship with businesses in Placerville proper and with the county. So I think that what we see going forward is that if we can establish Placerville as the hub, sort of the heart of this region, when we are driving consumers to experience their wine country stay, they're gonna just, just relate that idea with Placerville so that we can really all sort of rising tides float all boats. And that is a benefit to us as well. I mean, we want to be able to, um, have a great place to send our customers. And I think that if we can engage in this, I see this as sort of a partnership. This sign would be an in-spirits, uh, acknowledgement that we're sort of gonna engage in a, in a partnership together to try to get Placerville to be considered this, you know, hopping off point to go into wine country, but then have your sort of nighttime, uh, evening there, or your, your second day doing your shopping for that. Um, and this is a side note, aside from this grant, but I think I should bring this up. Um, and I can give you guys more information on this later. We're actually applying for two grants right now. The second one does, i- it's important for you guys to consider because this is just, this is infrastructure for us. The second grant is for $450,000 to develop a, um, sort of a geotourism e-commerce subscription service app that drives, we make like a wine club membership to the region. And why I'm bringing this up is because it is our commitment. You know, we want to be very transparent by saying that we're just aggressively invested in, um, promoting our mutual businesses. So with this app, if we get this grant, um, it not only has the wineries on there for the members to peruse and get offers and experience, but it's really dependent on us having secondary partners and restaurants lodging. Um, you know, not, you know, local businesses and stuff. So these are somewhat connected. So if we get both grants, what we're kind of offering to you guys to say that we are heavily invest, invested in, in driving traffic and driving sales, not just to wineries, but to our partner businesses who we really just depend on. So, um, that's that in a nutshell. Any questions about the?
Thank you so much. Um, you know what I'd like to do is, is go to public comment right now, um, and get a sense of what some people are thinking of, and then we can bring it back here, uh, for, for more questions. So, uh, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public comment is now open for item 12.1. This is the letter of support to provide signage for the Eldorado Winery Association. We'll start with Sue Rodman. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay. And one of the reasons that they want to do this is because there's no billboard availability on Highway 50, is what it says in your packet. There's a reason why there's no billboards along Highway 50. It's designated as a scenic highway, and part of that designation is a ban on billboards. Uh, if the winery association puts up a new sign, how are you going to prevent signs for other interest groups? If you approve a sign for Eldorado Winery Association, it would be discriminating not to approve signs for other groups such as Apple Hill, Christmas Tree Farms, and others. I would say, don't go down this slippery slope and violate the restrictions for the scenic highway on US 50. It's a beautiful sign, but I, it still violates what is a scenic highway. That's all.
Thank you, Sue.
Kirk Smith, go ahead.
My comment is consistent with what Sue Rodman just told you. This proposal is profoundly troublesome for a number of reasons. A number of you were on the city council about, what was it, six years ago? When there was a billboard at that very location, and every member of the council voted unanimously not to renew the contract where the city was getting money to, to, to rent that space in effect for private advertising. And, and when you take that out at that location, apart from the highway, what do you see? You see the landscape as it was, the way our ancestors saw it coming into town. There are three billboards at the west end of town already. Why don't you go out and try to rent those spaces instead of getting free space from the city? That would be your Welcome to the Wine Country. I appreciate, uh, having the extraordinarily talented Lexi Boger back to representing the, the wine industry. She does a great job. And I appreciate seeing that photograph of Almo Vasari, because my grandparents knew him. Everybody just about raised and grew, uh, grapes. Uh, on my mother's side, he made wine. Why? Because you had wine and beer and bottled water, because the water wasn't always safe to drink. Kids even drank wine for meals. Uh, what about the Placerville Brewery that was here at the same period of time where the Fausel House is? If you want advertising, go pay for it at the conventional sources, where you got billboards already. But I don't like the image of special folks getting special consideration, which is exactly what this looks like. So I strongly oppose it. And, and remember, did you, how, did you forget what the city said when the same folks wanted to use the Welcome to Placerville sign at Canal Street to use for advertising for the same group? The answer was strongly no, because this town and this county is known for lots of things. And before you start giving away free advertising space, which is a lousy way to do business, uh, consider other organizations too. So as, as Sue Rodman just said, it's a deeply, deeply sliding slippery slope. So I oppose it and hope you'll do the right thing, which would be consistent with what you've done in the past on two separate occasions involving these related issues. Thank you.
Kathy Lishman, go ahead.
Um, good evening again. Um, since the original request for the welcome sign was not approved two years ago, and I believe it was March 26th, 2019, and I hope I can have a little longer than three minutes, but I have unsuccessfully tried to follow up on what was happening. And I was quite surprised to know that this has been in the works for a long time now, without the public knowing about it until last week. I did not know about this until last week, and it seems kind of premature to bring it in this form to us at this time. Placerville City Council and city staff have the honor and the responsibility to use all available opportunities and resources within city limits to focus on protecting and promoting Placerville's uniqueness, its heritage, its many varied attractions, and its grace and charm. Along with Coloma, we are the heart of the Gold Country, a link in the chain of Gold Rush towns along historic State Route 49 and within the scenic designation of Highway 50. There is plenty to celebrate about Placerville, and we must take every opportunity to do so. We are the county seat and the gateway to so much that Eldorado County has to offer. The area is an eyesore. Many trees were removed for the off-ramp and park and ride, and I was under the impression the area was going to be landscaped. So what is the ultimate plan for fixing that area up? S- since there weren't, since there are no wineries in the city of Placerville, why are Placerville representatives entertain, entertaining the idea of, of promoting one local tourist industry above all the others that make up the charm and economy of Eldorado County? The idea of promoting advertising Eldorado County Wine Country is fine, and the sign is lovely, but the permanent winery sign doesn't belong in the city limits, and the scale of it seems out of, of anything else in Placerville. There is nothing of that scale, 40 feet. Why would Placerville want to use precious advertising space along Highway 50 to advertise for anything other than Placerville's many and varied businesses, attractions, history, and resources? Placer, Placerville has plenty of tourist attractions that could be out in the forefront. Placerville covers only six square miles. Our Highway 50 corridor is limited and precious. Why can't Placerville say what they want to be known for and use that area ourselves to develop a more inclusive theme? There are many miles of advertising opportunities along county roads, highways, and freeways outside the city of Placerville for city, for county industries to promote themselves where they are actually located. We wouldn't consider asking for a Gold Bud Park sign in Eldorado Hills. It would make no sense. A sign as large, a sign-
Respect, I would, I want to hope you could, uh, wrap it up. I appreciate your comments, and I-
I am, and I have just a little more to say, and I asked for permission at the beginning.
I know, I know, I'm, I try to be fair to everybody, and I want to make that clear. I, I do appreciate your comments.
And I would like to be able to wrap up my comments.
Please do, thank you.
A sign as large as the proposed 40-foot one could be located at the west entrance to Eldorado County or somewhere along the Highway 50 corridor between Eldorado Hills and Placerville, giving visitors something to think about all the way up the hill. There are other ways we can all partner together to support each other with having that sign in the city limits. And Placerville's motto is "Placerville: A Unique Historical Past, Forging Into a Golden Future." Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Okay, we'll take public comment from the caller with the last three digits, 600. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi, this is Gordon Helm, resident of, uh, Placerville and, um, I guess on several other boards and other ag-related entities in the county. And personally, I guess, speaking from my behalf only, I think this is, I actually think this is, um, a good location for something like this. Um, as one of the previous callers had, or speakers had stated that, you know, that the aesthetics aren't very good there. This would be something nice that will help to improve what that looks like. It's obviously not a billboard. Um, I think it's something that's much more, I guess, in line with, um, something that's aesthetically pleasing and, um, would help the overall improvement of what's, what's looking there. Um, with respect to the scenic highway comment, I believe the scenic highway ends, um, just on the east side of where this is. So I don't think it impedes on that. Um, the sign design, as I already stated, looks great. It helps to promote agriculture and agritourism, which is one of our fundamental economic drivers in this county. Um, it helps to promote the history. And again, I think it would, you know, help to bring, bring and promote economic development, both to Placerville as a whole and to the county as a whole itself also. That's what I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon.
Caller 857, go ahead.
Good evening, council. Hey, uh, so my position is absolutely no to this sign, um, for wine country. It is, this is a billboard. It is advertising one industry over all the others that we offer here. This is favoritism. This is free advertising. This is wrong. Um, the city already has an ordinance against billboards. They are looking to replace one that you removed with this. And if you did that, that would be hypocritical. That would be absolutely wrong to do. And Caltrans has many hurdles which allow, um, lots of public comment. Uh, if the public does not like something along Caltrans right-of-way, uh, they really do put the quash on it. And I know the scenic highway starts just a, a couple hundred yards down the road, and for the city to try and let the winery put this just outside the scenic highway, the highway is, um, nefarious. Eldorado, Eldorado County is so much more than just wine. Placerville is the gateway to so many different interests, camping, hiking, skiing, mining, timber, tourism, et cetera. Uh, what about the breweries? I think we have plenty of breweries in town, and I don't know of any wineries in the city limits. Uh, this sign belongs on county property outside the city, either below or above. And just my take is Lexi is a lobbyist. She's lobbying you for free signage on, I don't even know if that's city property or Caltrans property. And, you know, she's playing to our love of history to try and get this approved, and I can see right through it. I think a lot of other people can too. Um, and I think you've given precedence to allow her to have this long presentation that others now can apply to the city for their own long presentation of their interests to the city council meeting. Um, I really think this plan of just the wine country, Eldorado County Wine Country, is going to really ramp up gentrification. What you're gonna have, if this goes through, is it's gonna do the Napa thing. You're gonna get all the big-city types coming up here, buying up properties, driving up prices, making housing prices unaffordable for the average worker that has lived here their entire life. This is gentrification, and it always ends up badly.
All right.
Um, I'd say deny it.
Michelle Green, go ahead.
Hello, thank you for taking my comment, just a quick one. Um, I just wanted to say that this seems like an awesome idea. Um, you know, in terms of highlighting the wonderful wine that we have here in the county, in my opinion, would be nothing but a benefit. It would absolutely be an economic driver, and it would help our county to be known for some things that are nicer than the things that we're known for now. So in total support, thank you.
Melinda Velasco, go ahead.
Melinda, you there?
Yeah, sorry, I pressed the wrong button on my phone. Thank you, city council members. Um, I also think that it's a great idea. I'm just remembering when I grew up on my grandma's property, and there were grapevines out there. They were old, and then- And then I bought a piece of property in this a couple of years ago in downtown Placerville, and there's also grapevines. And I understand there's, there's, you know, native grapevines around here. But there's also this long history of grapes. And I, I just, I, I think it's a really sweet idea. Lexi's an awesome artist. And I know that the sign is going to be gorgeous, it looks gorgeous. I'm talking about the native stone and the grapevines and everything that's going to grow around it. I think it's a great idea. Also, I'm thinking about Placerville as a county seat. So I think that's, it makes perfect sense to put something like that here. Yeah, so I'm in support as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melinda.
Elizabeth Dubos, go ahead.
Be quiet. Hi, you guys, this is Lizzie. I am so happy that I can come on here and talk to you guys about this. I am in full support of Lexi Boger doing this. I think that it's a great tourist attraction. We talk about visitors coming in, we talk about tourists coming in. And I think that it's great, you know, when we Google even city of Placerville, we see apples, we see grapes, we see Main Street, we see pioneers, we see the Gold Rush. But then when you come to Placerville, you don't really see the wine country, but then if you just go a few miles up, you see it and it's beautiful. And every time I've ever brought in anyone here from out of town to visit and they say, what do we do? And I say, we go to Apple Hill, you know, and we pick apples and we, you know, we do the whole season of it and the fall is just lovely. And I think that Placerville definitely, you know, it does capitalize off of fall time and wintertime when people come here for Apple Hill season. And I think that it'd be a great thing, you know, for people to also see too. Maybe they had no idea that we had a beautiful place like Camino here. And I know that Placerville, it is small, but you know, I live in Pollock Pines and I come here every day. And I feel like being here and being a part of this is a really beautiful thing. And I feel like giving Lexi Boger an opportunity to kind of have like her dream come alive and kind of see this for us. I think that'd be a really great thing. And just want to say thank you one more time for letting us all speak. And Lexi, I love your artwork and I think that this is a really great thing moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Lizzie.
Jen C., go ahead.
Yeah, hi, I guess I just see this as, as, you know, another really big identity topic question. It's, it's, it's just such a statement and, you know, I think it's been said, you know, just as people were sharing about it on Facebook today, I thought of Uncle Fuzzy and his gateway to the motherlode theme that kind of goes with, you know, the potential of, of having a gem and mineral, you know, kind of venue somewhere, you know, downtown soon. And anyway, I just think there's a lot of ideas about how you would, how you would make a key message right there. And, you know, I, you know, I guess I just wanted to say it. It seems like it's part of this broader kind of community identity discussion that is, you know, kind of coming on the horizon. Of course, with, you know, the issues around the logo or the seal, but, you know, it kind of, it's an entry point to that larger, I think a larger whole community identity topic that seems like it's going to come up then. And I guess it, it kind of, I mean, of course, it's just, it sounds like a huge investment in this one particular message, although some of it seems like it's just the infrastructure, but it makes me wonder if there's any, any possible way that it could be rotating. I mean, maybe some of the infrastructure is part of the cost, but it just to get at this diversity of themes and things, I don't know. But it certainly seems like a major, a major decision and one that I think would need a lot of community input. Just because I think there will be a lot of different ideas. Thank you.
Thank you, Jen.
Lily Velasco, go ahead.
Hello, Lily.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
I can, yes, thank you.
Hi, thanks for taking my call. I wanted to say that I love the idea of it. I agree with the previous caller, Jen, with it being a major decision and maybe leaning toward this, you know, community identity and requiring further input and discussion. I like that idea because I like the idea of considering doing this beautification with some signage or some direction of all of our attractions. I totally support Lexi and I'm not trying to take away from that, but I think it's like a, a starting off point for that, for, for showing the beauty of Placerville in different ways with the materials and that are available from the landscape and tying it into the agritourism and the ag piece. I think we could do that with a lot of things, with the river, you know, attraction with Tahoe, with Apple Hill in a positive way. So I, I support it, but I definitely like the idea of coming back to the community for input for other pieces besides just how aesthetically it looks or, or the money piece or the grant, but, you know, the identity piece. So thank you guys and good job, Lexi. That's awesome.
Nicole Gottberg, go ahead.
So I just wanted to say I support it. I think it would be good for our small businesses. So just wanted to chime in. I think, you know, it, it doesn't just help the wineries. I do think it would help bring in agritourism and help our various businesses on Main Street as well. So I do think it's a good idea. I think it's a nice sign. I think, you know, it's in an area that doesn't look very pretty right now and would help make that look prettier. Thanks.
Thank you, Nicole.
Jonathan Gainesborough, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm loving hearing all the different comments. And I'm only a thirty, thirty-year in-county newcomer. But I'm a visionary and so is everyone that's spoken so far and the, and the council. I see a possibility, wherever the location is, I'd like to see it say, welcome Eldorado County and then wine, wine country on the line below it. I think they could still get their grants, but I'd like to see added to it being a wordsmith and I've written seven books. But Eldorado County, Wine Country. I like the grapevines, Wine Country, and then, then the wording, dot, 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 and so much more. So that the wording would inclusivize all the other benefits, the river, the whatever, the, with the jamboree up in the mountains with the jeeps, the, the gold mining history. And I'd also like to see the possibility of an artist putting on there the forty-niner, the, the gold miner with the, with the, with the pick symbolizing this is where the Gold Rush started. I, I think there's a way to, to make it a win-win, win-win, even if it's not in the six square miles of the city. So those are just, this is where, where the Gold Rush started, maybe could be in there somewhere. But anyway, I'll stop, but I'm not either for or against it. I don't necessarily like the, the mega commercial aspect of a wine club that might, as one commenter said, might bring in the, the, I don't know, the, the big city urbanity kind of spiritual familial emotional financial smog. I'll stop. Anyway, it's, I'm enjoying listening.
Thank you, Gordon.
Mandy Rodriguez, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. I like the idea of the sign. I also like the idea of a sign that says, welcome to Apple Hill country, welcome to gold country, ag country, farmer country, ski country, casino country, mountain country, tree lake, four-by-four country. So those are all great. And maybe we should just put a sign of each all the way down the corridor. I mean, why not? Let's go for it. Let's make that money. Thanks.
Thank you, Mandy. All right, looks like we have no more public comment. Looks like we have two more. Wait, all right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Sue Taylor, go ahead.
Hi, I hesitated. So can you hear me? I had my plug in.
We can hear you fine, Sue, thank you.
Okay. Um, so this is one of those things that just popped into my vision yesterday. And it's just, it's like, there's a lot of work that went into this and it's like being worked on in a silo. And this is a huge, I mean, basically you're turning over branding of Placerville to the Winery Association. And it's just, you know, it's another one of those, wow, whoa, where, you know. And actually, this picture reminds me of Eldorado Hills, even their marquee is very similar to this. And I, I just think this is the wrong time and energy and it just feels with COVID, we don't have these workshops, these meetings with the community, the opportunity to have these kind of discussions. And this is the second time this has been kind of put upon Placerville with, you know, and, and able for these guys to get grant funding, a large amount of grant funding. And I, I don't, you know, being a big part of downtown, it's like, when do we get to participate in these decisions that are being made by the city council and people that are coming from outside, you know, bringing these things? To me, it's kind of strange to say, welcome to the wine country right as you're coming into Placerville. It's like, welcome, welcome. This is really a county entity. The city is not the wine country. So I just think it's kind of a strange location for this. I think it can be, you know, I, I really see it more artistically fitting like around the Eldorado Hills area, the Bass Lake area. But as you come up the hill, it feels too modern that way in a way. And it, and it just doesn't, I don't know. It's, it's like the rebranding for funding. And I just, I appreciate the words that Kathley Litchman and stated, and I would support those things that she, she's worked a lot on landscaping and the visual and the, my, anyway, she's done a lot with trying to get Placerville to look lovely with those kind of things. And I think you should really, her comment should hold a lot of weight. And I agree that I've always thought this has kind of turned into scorched earth. And I would like to just go back to planting some trees and get some ground cover back in there. So anyway, thanks for giving me the opportunity to say something.
Thank you, Sue.
Ed Ingram, go ahead.
Hello, council members. I really like the idea of the sign. I would suggest that we add some other signage along with it that supports the other agricultural entities that the, that we have in the county, whether it be badges or signage that we could add to the Wine Country sign would be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor, there is just one left. Do you want to go ahead and hear this? Okay, caller eight four eight, go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, thank you.
Hello, my name's Erin. I'm the chair of the Wampanis Nation on Miwok. And I just wanted to just chime in on this topic. I do like the idea of a sign, but I would really like you guys to honor the fact that Native Americans were here first. Our machas were down in Coloma and they were used, we used grapevines to hold, you know, the cedar slats together that we lived in. And, and we were here before the white man showed up. We were, we were here, we helped, you know, Marshall find that gold and, and we were never honored. We were only, we were only slaughtered. We were only killed. And I don't necessarily like the idea of using the word casino because that's a wooden nickel. And let's, let's not go down that path, but I think we need to honor the fact that this is Wampanis Nation on Miwok land. We were here. We were living on the land. And if you want to honor our society and our, and our cultural, we need to remember that not to be racist and not take the, the Indian lady off of the butter. Let's remember those people and remember us and, and not kill us again by, by not honoring us on that sign. When, when people come here, they do see the trees and they, and they do see the Apple Hill and they do see the, you know, the vineyards. But they're not honoring the people. There's nothing that says that there was Native Americans here. You know, in, out in the east, they honor those people and they put them on signs and let them know that they're on Indian land. And I think it's important that we remember these people because we were here first and not to take us away again and slaughter us again. And I just really appreciate you, you taking the time. We were here way before seventeen eighty, eighty-nine. You know, Nevada represents the Native Americans that were out there, all over their, you know, off-ramps and freeways. And it would be a real honor to know that you guys would put either a macha on that sign or put welcome to the Wampanis Nation on Miwok land or something like that. I would really appreciate it. And I'm sure all the Native Americans that are from here, which my bloodline goes back. Captain Camino is one of my family members. His name was named after, you know, Camino was named by him. And let's not remember that my great, my five times great-grandmother was Rosa Lee Pollock, which got her name from Pollock Pines because she was, she was stolen as a six-year-old child, stolen, sold at auction and, and then, you know, had to make way for herself. Let's not forget those stories that those Indians were there and they were here. And I'm one of the fraction of the one percent of people that are left and yet I am, I'm not honored. Nobody, nobody cares about the Native Americans anymore, but our county can. And we can remember them and we can bring that story forward and we can say, this is their land. Let them have, you know, a word and a say-so. Let's not forget them and bury them and take them off of the butter and rip down their statues.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lily, I see your hand raised. You've already had an opportunity to speak, so we'll, I'll give it back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, we're going to close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Boy, so there is, there's a lot to unpack here with all the comments and everybody's thoughts on this issue. And, and, you know, I'm going to start off by just, first of all, thanking Lexi for, for taking the time to share her thought, her vision for her industry here. I think you, I think you have, you're actually out there doing it. People say, well, why don't we get to? Well, because you do, you haven't stood up and said, I want to go out and find grants and get money to do things. And so, you know, there's, there's, there's something said about people that get out and hustle and get their, and, and do that. And, and I, and I, that's how, that's how things get done in this country and in this town. So there's, there's something to be said for that. And, and I do appreciate that. You know, there's also, there's a, there's a lot of comments about the identity of our town and, and, and while there are no wineries in here, it also affects our community, both good and bad. And this is going to be an interesting, this is going to be an interesting conversation. I don't know if we'll be able, I'd be curious to see if we're going to be able to finish it here because there's a lot to be said about improving the agrotourism and the benefits to the county and the benefits to the Winery Association, the wineries and the AVA. And there's also something to be said about the impact to our community and our town when we start increasing tourism and agrotourism. And so it, it's a mixed blessing. And, you know, some people say it's a win-win-win-win-win for everybody because we'll have a big sign with everybody's name on it and, you know, that won't be able to read it. But I thought that was kind of interesting. So I, there's a lot to unpack here on both sides of it and I, and I look forward to discussion. So I'm going to open that up here. Yes. Just, just for, just for one more point of, point of discussion, this is not the city property. This is Caltrans right-of-way property and any, 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 anything to do with this sign potentially going in, we also have to go through a process with, with Caltrans and their, and through their process for the right-of-way for that piece of property. The sign that was previously there was, was taken down by the city because it was old, decrepit, fallen down. And we knew that this property was going to be developed for this Western Placerville interchange, so we tore it down. And that was the main purpose of it and we were just And we were just, you know, it was exceeded its useful life. So, you know, for that, I'm going to open it up for further discussion and questions for Lexi. Yeah, yes, Patty.
I just want to follow up on what you just said. I was also going to bring it up that this is a Caltrans right-of-way. And I think, I think that has to go through an approval process. This might be, you know, they haven't, uh, they don't have Caltrans approval. So this whole thing might be a moot point. And also, I'm wondering, could we, because it was brought up several times tonight about how barren that hill is, could we ask Rebecca Neves if there is something being planned for some sort of, you know, replacing, you know, some of those trees that were taken down or some sort of making that hill, you know, that whole area look much, much better? I'm just not too sure from past experience, but I'll try again.
You're on mute, Rebecca.
I just wanted to check and make sure I wasn't overstepping, sorry. We do have some minor landscaping back in that area for the project, but pretty minor overall. So as far as the trees go, actually, tree clearing operations, as it went out in the announcement, the community update last week, the tree clearing is actually commencing right now with the on-ramp. And as far as the tree clearing goes, there's a mitigation process that we go through, because we don't have physically the real estate to put the trees back where we took them out, right? So what we do is we actually go through a mitigation bank process that will actually plant trees in the region on our behalf. So we re-vegetate our area that way where we can't mitigate. Now, I will say on the interchange project, first, or the phase that was just completed last year, we actually did plant a fair amount of trees back. There was an extensive landscaping effort with that project. So there is kind of a trade-off. But as far as that hill goes, it was really going to receive some, you know, permanent erosion control and some vegetation that way, but no real designated carved-out landscaping piece. So this, this sign would actually be an amenity towards creating something in that space. Does that make sense?
Yes, thank you.
Sure.
Yes, Kara. And unmute yourself. Thank you.
I, um, you know, I, I hear the public comments. I hear the concerns about this. I, I have to respectfully disagree, though. I think this is a great project. I thought it was a great project when it came around the first time. Edwa and the winery industry really supports downtown, not just the restaurants, but the art galleries and the boutique shops and the gas stations. And unlike Apple Hill or Christmas Trees, it's kind of steady year-round. Tourists that don't just pass through, but come and spend money. And, um, I, I can just say, you know, having had a business on Main Street and spent many years working in a kind of a parallel industry to the winery industry, the benefits to working kind of in a symbiotic relationship, not just with the winery industry, but, you know, all of the other industries that take part in, in this area is beneficial to our businesses. And I think that, you know, there's, there's kind of been a lot of this what-about-ism that's come up. You know, what about rafting? What about Apple Hill? And, you know, like Mayor Thomas said, nobody else has asked to put a well-designed $300,000 sign somewhere in Placerville. If they, you know, if there were ideas out there to co-market other industries, I'm all for hearing those. I don't think that we should, you know, clutter up a hillside with a whole bunch of things, but I think that there's ways to tactfully do it. And I'm, I'm all for working with other industries to, you know, enhance the businesses and business environment that we have in Placerville. So I wholeheartedly support this project. And I, I urge my colleagues to, um, to vote to support the letter for this grant.
Thank you, Karen. Yes, go for it, no.
I think there's a lot of opportunity in this proposal. And I'd like to see a little bit more of the partnership between the city of Placerville on this sign. Coming into the city of Placerville. So I'm conceptually in favor of the sign. I'd like to see the opportunity for a few more tweaks. Not sure, I mean, the brick is really pretty, but if we walk around town, maybe there's a cobblestone that might be a little bit more Placerville that we can do. You know, I just, there's just a great opportunity for partnership here to highlight some of the things that are historical. And I don't think, just because we don't have a proposal from everyone at this particular moment, means that we shouldn't try to move forward with those opportunities ahead of us. And so I would support option two, to authorize the mayor to sign the letter of interest and support, but give us an opportunity to tweak that sign some to make it maybe just a little bit more Placerville.
Thank you. Yes, Michael.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I mean, anyone that knows me knows my, my love of wine and how I've made my house into that.
This makes you smile when you say the word, huh?
Yes. And it, it does. I mean, I, I thank you, Lexi, on, on the history as well, because it's true. It's been a huge part of Placerville and the entire area. My house was built by the Skinners originally, who were both in, in a brewery and in wine-making. And, you know, one of the, the founding folks here in town as well. So even my house itself has a direct relationship back to, to wine and to the grapes that are grown in this region. And we do sit in the middle of an AVA. And we have that direct relationship. I would love, you know, as we move forward, I would love to have pl- uh, wineries in Placerville. You know, as we look at our future and to the east of town and the wider, or some of the grapes that are already being grown there that could potentially be in city limits at some day. And so I, I do think there's opportunities there. There's certainly a tasting room right across from me on B Street. There at Nello Alivo, that, that's right there. So we, we have at least one. I, I mean, I could foresee more tasting rooms downtown as well as, as our wineries mature. And it's a little bit like Paso Robles, where originally you had most of their wine tasting in, at the wineries. And then as they've grown and matured, they've also brought secondary sites into their downtown streetscape as well. For folks that maybe, you know, didn't want to travel out to all the different areas, but still had the opportunity to taste some, some really great wines. And just a little bit more history, if you will. Chateau Bocastal from Chattanooga to Pop originally came out to our, our area, to our AVA as well as to Paso Robles for their sister winery, which turned out to be Topless Creek and Paso Robles. But we have a rich history here. I mean, even the French knew our, our soil is fantastic. And there's just so many different opportunities here, I, I think. I, I love, I really love the idea. I agree with Councilmember Noe. I think there's ways to Placerville it a little bit more, for lack of a better term. And, and, and also the, the size and, and, you know, what it looks like. Because I, I do have a little bit of a, not heartburn, but I, I like, I mean, this, people will see this before they ever see our welcome to Placerville sign, you know, as they get into town. And so, you know, there is that, where we're, you know, where we won't be sort of the first thing, even in city limits, that, that folks see. So maybe there's a way to, to add some Placerville to that as well. And, but, you know, that's something that we can look at as we go forward. But I, I certainly think the idea is such a, a huge part of our history. And, um, and I think for our future as well, as Lexi also mentioned. So with, with that, um, I would make a motion to, um, approve support of the letter. And with caveat that we'd come back and, you know, work with Edwa on what that final look would be.
So that's option two, you're?
That would be option two, correct, sorry. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Just making sure, just clarify.
Yes, yep.
Second.
A second, second that motion.
I think this is, puts us in a very interesting place here. Conceptually, I, I like the idea of a sign. Can, can we, and I would, I would like to ask Lexi, can we, is there room to incorporate? Is it, is this a, is this a either/or, where we have to have only the word El Dorado, not the word Placerville? Is there room for, for consideration for the city there? Because what I see, what I see here is it's, it's taking away from the identity of Placerville. You're driving in and the first thing you see is, welcome to, to, um, yeah, welcome to the wine country, but it's really Placerville. And is that, is that a part of this consideration if we were to approve option two and give you that letter?
Um, so the only constraints it looks like we have from the grant perspective, because it is CDFA, which is an agricultural-based thing, is they are very clear. If it's going to promote non-California specialty crops, we will be disqualified. I do not think saying something like Placerville gateway to want, gate, gateway of Plac or whatever, I don't think that would, I think they're more concerned about us promoting other crops or other industries that are corporate or not specialty crop. So I don't really foresee that as a problem. And I just absolutely want to say that it is our, we are with open heart, totally willing to talk about whatever changes need to happen to make this a good thing for Placerville. And, and certainly if other industries wanted to add on and, and, you know, I, I see this as speed dating and we're kind of the ones putting our name in the hat, you know, saying like, guys, not only do we want to date, but we're willing to pay for it. And, you know, we got a great night planned, you know? So, um, I think that putting Plac around there is not a, not, probably not going to be an issue. And we are really open to, again, like with the cobblestone, whatever we need to do to make this Placerville-ish, you know? And back to what the comment is, we're saying it sound, you know, as we know, Placerville is in flux and there isn't, you guys are in an identity crisis. We, as a Placovian, there's an identity change happening. And we are just saying, please consider us as part of the identity you see as the future. And whatever we need to do to make that be the identity you guys want to be, that, that is part of that complete holistic identity of the future, that's, we're just absolutely open to doing that.
All right. Thank you very much, Lexi. Any further discussion? Yes, Patty.
Uh, Lexi, I just wanted to ask you real quick. You mentioned that you were going to, I, I, I think I'm saying the wrong wording, designate like different areas or zones? Or is, are you going to use the same sign design to go into, you know, an area that? Anyway, do you know what I'm trying to say to you?
Absolutely, artists here, yeah. So we want consistency throughout the AVA with the branding. But we are considering if Placerville wants to take this role as the, the hub or the gateway, whatever you got, whatever we agree with you guys as to being the acceptable design, the, the smaller signs will follow that design. And we would love to keep consistency throughout. And I think whatever you got, whatever we decide, if we go down this road, whatever is decided together, I'm sure will be beautiful and tasteful and we'll just follow that through.
Well, what I'm thinking is, um, you know, if we somehow, we can work it out that Placerville could be some of the wording on the sign that maybe when you go to the different areas, because obviously they're not going to be Placerville, but that area could be, you know, replace the Placerville name.
And you're already, you've actually are ahead of, you're, you're ahead of yourself already because we, with the designs we have for the smaller ones, they already say fair play AVA. They say, welcome to Coloma, absolutely. You know, having Placerville, I mean, those are, the things we're designing, those are sub-AVAs. They're like actually legal recognized wine growing areas. But I, I don't think it, I don't, that's just like gray area. I don't have any problem to say Placerville. And I would love to see terms like, you know, gateway or the heart of, or, you know, something like along those lines.
I kind of think that's what we're all kind of thinking, you know?
Yeah.
Just one more thing to add to, to this that I didn't mention before is that built into the grant is we have to, we have benchmark, um, community benchmark services. We have to do tracking of sales, sales increases and increases in visitation throughout the county to our direct beneficiaries. And also with the app, if we get that grant, we're going to have massive reporting as to increases in visitation and sales. So for anyone who's questioning the actual direct benefits that are going to come to in Placerville proper businesses, if those businesses are onboarded with us, we can literally say, we've increased your foot traffic by this. We've increased overall sales by this, that we are an economic driver at this degree. And we can, um, and we are, will, as a partner, we would be transparent with those reportings to you guys as a city. And certainly with Placerville businesses who are onboarded with us for our other programs, they would be getting personalized reports to say, here's your increases. These are, this and that isn't working, this is working. And, you know, we can give a real overview to you guys about how this is impacting our economy. And, and mostly we're doing this because of the COVID scenario. I mean, we really want to see that we can drive, drive sales and increase foot traffic, both online and in person through this, these programs.
Thank you, Lexi.
Great.
I know for years we have tried to, uh, we had partnered, tried to partner with Apple Hill and they gave us the, well, they said, no, thank you. And, uh, and repeated. And I know that that has been a long, long thing to do, because we were looking for that partnership in, in branding and, uh, and getting, you know, just dovetailing off of an industry that was, seemed to be successful. So with that, um, let's go ahead and take a roll call vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just get clarification on who seconded the motion? Was that yourself or was that a council member Noe?
It was Councilmember Barelli, I believe, seconded it.
No, it was Kara Taylor.
Oh, there we go.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Noe?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. All right. Thank you very much, Lexi. We're going to sign off with you for now and move on. Have a good evening. All right, now we're moving to item 12.6. We're jumping ahead.
Can we have just five minutes before we move to that next item?
I apologize, yes, I, that was my plan and I forgot. So let's go ahead and take a, a five-minute break. Let's go with seven minutes and we'll see you back here at eight thirty-three. Thank you. All right, let's go ahead and bring this meeting back to order. And the first, the first thing I'd like to do is, is have a quick discussion about tabling item.
Twelve point two.
Yeah, twelve point two, uh, the drone presentation. I think that's something, I think our, our timing is we're going late as it is. And that is going to take a bit. So I'd like to table, I am twelve point two and move that to a future agenda. No date certain, depending on the, the city manager's desire with that. Can I get a, an agreement with that? Do we, we need a motion for that? So can I get a, a motion?
I'd make a motion to table twelve point two and, uh, item thirteen, which are the council reports, unless there's something earth-shattering that has to be done on those.
A second.
Right. And can I get a roll call, please? Chris McCall.
Councilmember Barelli?
Aye.
Councilmember Noe?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
Mayor Thomas?
Aye. All right, moving right along to item twelve point six. We are looking at the review, final draft request for proposal for at least of two certified farmers markets and direct staff to make changes and/or to authorize staff to release the RFP on February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one. And this is going to be tossed to, uh, Mr. Zeller.
Thank you, Mayor Thomas and council members. Can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, uh, so first, a little bit of background to our farmers markets. The city of Placerville has hosted farmers markets on city property over the years. And last year, uh, we were under contract with three separate markets. I think most people know them, but for those that don't, uh, we had the Wednesday afternoon market at the Bell Tower on Main Street. There's a Saturday morning market on the El Dorado Trail, just north of the Ivy House Lot on Clay Street, and a Sunday morning market on the Tuchel Lot adjacent to the post office off Sacramento Street. So, um, looking at these RFPs and, um, I wanted to also state that, that this RFP process has been met with several concerned market operators questions. And I will be discussing those also, as well as what's in the staff report in my presentation. I just wanted to let you know that. So so in the discussion, informal feedback from market goers to the city and feedback from the council has trended toward asking for more choices and also to look at having some possible fewer days or locations to allow market growers to expand their shopping lists at single larger markets on specific days. Therefore, my department has drafted a request for proposals for the management of farmers markets for the Fox Lot at the intersection of Main and Sacramento Street for Wednesdays. And the frontage of the Eldorado Multi-Use Trail at Clay Street, just north of the Ivy House Lot on Saturdays. That's the assumption of this RFP. And the plan would be for applicants to apply, be able to apply for one or both of these locations with their aforementioned days of the week. It has been talked about that allowing to continue a market around the bell tower is is, it doesn't really allow for the growth. I think the vendors that we had this year was was pushing the limit. And it doesn't allow for expansion. So that was the idea of discussing moving the location to the Fox Lot. So the RFP asks for the successful market managers to be qualified and able to operate, manage a certified market, have the ability to acquire the farmer's market certificate through Eldorado County Ag Commissioner's Office, which is already a requirement for our existing markets. There's language as is to the level of management deemed necessary to operate a successful market and minimums and restrictions on the type of vendors to be allowed within the market. There's also requirements for successful applicant to provide their own staffing to manage the market on onsite for each market day. So saying that, I've also, through discussions with our existing market operators, have some additional points to consider that I'd like the council to consider when looking at the RFP. First of all, the the existing RFP draft in your staff report does have some fairly rigid dates as far as the day, the dates, the month of, the month of the year, start and end. So definitely need to look at providing some flexibility for those start and stop times for the markets because it's it's weather and crop specific. There have been questions about vendors and alcohol and I am leaning towards what has been allowed through the county in the past, continuing through. And that's not spoken to in the RFP. Also, there is a piece in there that says no non-county vendors allowed. We already do allow vendors from outside the county. So I think that's something that should be considered. Also, the time of operations needs to be more flexible from discussing this with market operators. And there's also the interest from the part of the city to only open this RFP to Eldorado County residents or nonprofit organizations. That's in keeping with making sure that we're still focused on our local economy and our local markets. So I also wanted to know, let the public know that I appreciate the feedback and the input I've received on this agenda item. And I think it's important that we, as public servants, are greatly helped with with the participation that we get on these items. So the request from staff is that council review the draft RFP and provide input and changes if necessary. And the staff report is looking to get it out on February fifteenth, but I understand that there's been a lot of public comment on this item and that there might be some interest in another timetable. So if there's any questions from the council, that wraps up my my staff report at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Zeller. Does anybody have questions for Mr. Zeller right now?
I don't have questions, but I have some comments.
Yeah, thank you. All right.
Well, first, I I want to thank staff for working on this and my colleagues for hearing this item. This is kind of near and dear to my heart. I got my start at farmers markets about ten years ago and I love shopping at farmers markets. For years, I've been dreaming of Placerville having large farmers markets with lots of customers, where the vendors make good money and customers had lots of options and foot traffic spilled over to the surrounding businesses. It's kind of what I really want to see with with these, any changes that we might make. This year, you know, we we had lots of markets, some on private property and then the three that worked with the city. And, you know, the Wednesday market is great, it's well-run, it's popular, it's doing really well. But it it does provide some challenges for the city. And it is kind of bumping into the outer limits of its growth potential. And then it seems like the Saturday market, which has always been really popular, is kind of splintering into smaller groups. And, you know, having markets on multiple days that are small just does not provide the motivation for customers to come out of their way to downtown. They might capture some people walking by. But, you know, the ability to draw people to downtown, I think, diminishes with these smaller markets. So what I would, what I really wanted to see with this item was just kind of bigger markets. And there was some back and forth early on in this process with Cleve. My my original thought was with this was not to necessarily restrict the number of markets, but to restrict the time and days that they were so that you could potentially have multiple markets on Saturday morning that were walking distance from each other, that each kind of had their own specialties and foot traffic going between to the other businesses. I mean, I just wanted to throw that out there as, you know, I reached out to a lot of people over the last couple of days to get feedback on this. And some of the feedback that I got was, we don't want to limit opportunity for people to start, you know, start a business or start a market. There was a lot of concern about messing with the Wednesday market, which is doing well. There was, you know, regrettably, some people that were really important to this whole conversation felt kind of blindsided about this whole item and I feel bad about that. But, you know, there were a lot of, there were a lot of good concerns and valid points in them that I reached out. And I think that there's hopefully a way that we can, you know, reach the goal of having well-attended markets that are good for customers, good for vendors and good for downtown, but still allow for diversity and, you know, different niches and all that.
Thank you for your comments there. All right, any further questions for staff or comments? All right, let's go ahead and we'll open it up for public comment at this time. Yeah. Mr. McConnell, go. Can't hear you, Regina.
Okay, Lulie Velasco, go ahead.
Hi, everybody, I'm back. Hi, City Council, staff, sitting, community members of downtown Placerville and of Eldorado County. I'm grateful for the opportunity to provide feedback on this item. For those of you that don't know me, my name's Lulie Velasco. I am a resident of Placerville and the owner of Soul Community Sunday Farmers Market at six eight one Main Street. I would like the council to consider postponing the agenda item twelve point six in your voting in order to host a town hall meeting and sit down and discuss with all of us farmers market owners with markets and city limits. To inform yourselves of how this new process for limiting markets will affect all of us, including the farms and small businesses that we host. There are several areas of the proposal that I find need amending to reflect the needs of the community that we all serve. After hearing our feedback and perspectives, I hope you all go back to the drawing board with your proposal to ensure it reflects the needs and perspectives of all stakeholders in the farmers market circuit in town. Please be thoughtful. If you don't have a well-informed perspective on the broad aspects of our farmers market communities' needs, our far-reaching connections made as a result of us being a community center and community hub and all those participants affected, please don't vote tonight. If you do not know how your decision isn't going to affect markets, please vote to table this so that you can develop a comprehensive and complete proposal that reflects all of us, all of the community, the what works and the what doesn't. And I have a couple of points I'm going to try to address really quick that I think need amending that a town hall discussion warrants, removing the twenty-five percent limit for non-farmer vendors. That would be because right now during COVID, farmers markets are the only places for these small businesses to sell. It's not always the case when COVID is not in existence, but right now it's really huge. The June through September, this is California, you know, we grow all year round. We're an ag county and this literally like takes food off people's plates by limiting the months. I don't think the city should take a hand in that at all. I don't think the weather really is that big of a deal and counseling a few times over the winter, you know, is really easy. I want to thank you guys for mentioning Terry to only allow residents to apply. I spoke with Cleve about that Monday and I really appreciate your guys' thought on that. And then another point I wanted to bring up about why we need further discussion is the Saturday location as an example that has been communicated to the city by market owners, vendors and farmers that that location would possibly kill that Saturday market. And it's almost done that. So I think those are reasons that we should postpone this and have further discussion with those of us that are directly involved. Thank you so much.
Right in there in three minutes, we appreciate that.
I tried really hard. I want Dennis cutting me off.
Thank you.
Sue Radman, go ahead.
Okay, I am a farmers market customer. And I am really glad to see that the city realizes that the Wednesday market at the bell tower is not working well. That Wednesday market causes congestion around the bell tower, stagecoach alley and the parking garage, to the point where getting to any of the businesses on Main Street is next to impossible on Wednesday afternoons. Now there are sidewalk dining structures along Main Street, which would greatly complicate putting a farmer's market at the bell tower. Using the Fox Lot for the Wednesday market is a definite improvement. Also, it seems that Placerville has found that three farmers markets per week is more than customers are willing to support. Having two markets at the proposed locations would solve the congestion problem at the bell tower and provide adequate opportunity for both vendors and customers. I think it's a good solution. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sue.
Dan Harland, go ahead.
All right, this is the first time doing this. Can you hear me?
We can, you made it.
All right, good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Dan Harland and I am the owner and operator of the Hangtown Certified Farmer's Market. Not only am I a market manager, I am also a certified grower and vendor. My family has a local fruit orchard that was planted here in nineteen seventy-five. Forty-six years of farming in Eldorado County. Tonight, I want to reiterate just how important farmers markets are to our local farmers. Some farms, such as ours, rely solely on farmers markets to be able to sell our locally grown fruit to our community. For a lot of us, this is our sole source of income. If I am reading this proposal correctly, the city of Placerville wants to eliminate local farmers markets on city property to only Wednesdays and Saturdays. My market that I took over this past year happens to be Sundays at the Tetra lot, which I leased from the city of Placerville. This season, I was able to take a dying market and acquire some of the best farmers, bakers and crafters. And through a ton of hard work, advertising and self-promotion, our market improved sales and foot traffic by double. Phenomenal for a poor location. At our peak, we had twenty-plus vendors and ended the season with roughly ten. These farmers, bakers and crafters became like family to me. And I was extremely proud and happy that I was able to help provide an avenue for them to earn money and provide for themselves and for their families. So are you proposing to take that away? And if so, why? In closing, I would like to say that location is critical in growing and having a successful farmer's market. Saturdays used to be a phenomenal market when it was in Ivy Parking Lot. Sales at that market have plummeted forty to fifty percent since being moved to the bike trail. Bad location, out of sight equals out of mind. Wednesdays currently is the best and most financially lucrative for vendors and for local brick and mortar stores. To move that market would cause loss of sales for all the vendors. I see nothing but a symbiotic relationship between our local farmers and our brick and mortar stores. Who, if anyone, benefits from moving that market? Our town is primarily agriculture and I urge you to rethink these proposals and not take away our ability to provide for our families and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Now we'll take public comment from caller five two five. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Leo Bennett Koshon. And I appreciate some of the explanations that I'm hearing because there were certainly many concerns. And I do hope that you listen and postpone. I think you need a lot more data. There's references in the proposal to informal surveys. I think having some formal surveys would be helpful. I'm not even sure that you really have a problem. I mean, I hear the vision for the future, but folks are recovering from COVID. You have logistic and infrastructure issues, as has been shared about location. Just so many different things to look at in order to support your existing farmer's market. I don't think it's time to prune back in any way. I think each market, and I've been to all of them, offer different niches and different benefits. And I like going to the one on Wednesday and then going and getting fudge from a brick and mortar and dropping in on the hardware store. So I'm I'm hearing that that's problematic for some people, but that particular location has worked well for my family. I like walking and I don't mind parking far away. So there's just a whole lot more data I think you need. And I second that having markets on Sundays, it's nice to go to church and then spend some time walking around the historic downtown and dropping in on the two different farmers markets. So again, to me, I don't see the problem yet. I certainly see a vision to growing, but I think you need to safeguard your existing managers, your existing markets and be careful that, you know, when I read the proposal, it's a bureaucratic piece of legislation that might be premature as you let these markets recover. Thank you.
Thank you, Liam.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to move, Lexi Boger has her hand raised, so I'll let her speak now. Go ahead, Lexi.
Hi, guys, I'm back as a, just a citizen. And I have been a vendor at the Soul Community Market on Sundays as an artist and as a wine salesman. And also for the Wine Association, I sort of helped spearhead the wineries who wanted to get into different markets. And all I would have to say is, you know, I think that the big elephant in the room is what's going to be the scenario with special use permits? Because I think it's certainly appropriate for the city to limit what what they approve as a city law to two days a week as your city duty. But then what's going to happen on those private lots? Because I think there's some scenarios with maybe protectionism or or dealing with competition. I don't, you know, so I think there's some questions there. But, you know, if I had to look at what would be the ideal situation for Placerville, just as a citizen, I'd say, what to look, if you're only going to do two, to have one that addresses some of our needs of sort of diversity or uniqueness or underrepresented communities. And I think certain markets are bringing aspects that we don't normally get to see. I'd hate to see those not be able to be present because we've limited the number. So I think we need to, it's back to that sort of what is Placerville's identity? And I think that the Wednesday night, if you have an evening market, it's the perfect opportunity to do something a little bit avant-garde. So if the city's going to permit two, I would highly think that recommend that you would do two very different from each other. And a Saturday afternoon lends itself to be a traditional farmer's market. Maybe you guys would consider the Wednesday one being to an organizer who might be bringing something, you know, integrating cultural aspects or music and more artisans and stuff like that, so that they're not even competing with each other. And the last thing would be that I think that when you have private for-profit organizers and the city is talking about protecting or restricting competition, you might get into an ethical scenario there. So I would encourage looking at organizers that are not-for-profit agricultural entities like Farm Trail, who I think is excellent, would love to see them do Saturday. But maybe looking for, looking towards the Davis model perhaps where they've got nonprofit board run. People running these markets who have a representative from, say, local business, one from city and representatives from ag to make sure that you're not just protecting business for a for-profit person, but that you're actually putting a board-run entity who cares about agriculture in charge of these protected markets. So just a couple of thoughts. Thanks, guys.
Now taking public comment from Tammy Dans. Go ahead.
Hello, Tammy.
Hello, council members. Yes, I agree with some of Kara Taylor's comments. What I'd like to add to that is the Fox lot has gotten too small for the farmer's market. There's a lot of agricultural market people that would like to participate. Something to consider, you know, one big farmer's market, you know, one day a week and then possibly on Main Street also at the Bell Tower. But Mosquito Station, Placerville Station, number two lot is going to be complete soon. And we have Highway 50 access. We've got the bike trail. We've got plenty of parking. There's going to be bathrooms. You won't have to have porta potties. So something to really consider down in the future because we do want to grow in the market area because we all enjoy local produce that our county has to supply us. Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Michelle Green, go ahead.
Hello. I just wanted to encourage the council to remove item 12.6 from the agenda and allow for further discussion prior to a vote so that the community has more time to review the effects of this on a local level. So thank you.
Caller 846, go ahead.
Hello, my name is Sean Walgren. I'm the owner-operator of Walgren Woods Family Farm. We're a small produce farm here in Placerville, but we do three markets a week last year. And I just kind of wanted to touch and disagree with both sides of what I see to be an issue with what we're talking about here. The first being decreasing the amount of markets in the town. For someone like me who is a small farmer, but still a full-time farmer, I kind of play the numbers game where I need multiple markets to make up the pieces of what becomes a financially viable farm. And so with that, you know, we do multiple markets a week, even some of the slower markets, the Friday mornings, Sundays. And, you know, in general, it supports the smaller farmer that can't sustain the amount of produce needed to do a larger market like that and compete with some of the farms down in Lodi and Elk Grove and something like that. And so it's really important for us to have multiple markets. And, you know, I talk to customers all the time who thank us for having the smaller markets because they're not either available or able to make it to the time slot to some of the other markets. And so you hit some of the the groups of people that just can't seem to make it out on a Wednesday night or something like that. And then the other part of this that we see as a problem is moving that Wednesday market would be hugely detrimental to a market that's gaining momentum right now and growing very quickly. People are starting to notice it as a good market. There's something that a lot of the major farmers markets that are successful have something in common, whether it be Chico or San Luis Obispo or Santa Clara, is that they all close down a main street in the town that's provide good visibility for their farmers and for the market itself and actually draw in crowds. And so I think in a time post-COVID or during COVID right now where we are, you know, seeing a lot of small businesses struggling to do everything, a city like Placerville should be doing everything we can to promote all the small businesses that we have and being an ag community. I think agriculture should be, you know, first and foremost with everything else. And so we shouldn't be doing anything that might hurt small farms and the community that we live in and instead should be trying to figure out ways that we can promote these markets and make them better, all of them. And so, you know, I just hope that you guys kind of hear that and understand that, you know, it's more than just trying to have a successful market. It's about trying to build up the community that we all live in and that we all want to see be successful.
Thank you very much.
Ali Jones, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I'm just calling to request that you please postpone item 12.6 to allow for further discussion with market organizers and more time for the community to understand the impacts of the agenda item being approved. So, thank you.
You, Ali.
David Egness, go ahead.
Hi, thank you for having me. To agree on postponing this issue for a later date so the council can better understand the issue and the effects it has on the local businesses. One of the things I would like to encourage you to consider is keeping the Wednesday night market the same. That location, while it is small, is very helpful to a lot of businesses that not only have brick and mortars there, but the businesses that are there in the market. We, as business owners, we go there and support the businesses on Main Street. And they enjoy having us there as well. One of the biggest aspects, though, of having that market is the business that my wife has created through that market. Started out as a little tiny bakery hut and bakery booth. And thankfully to the success of that market has grown into a huge success and is now able to be a actual brick and mortar on Main Street. So I just wanted to speak to the success of that market and just hope that you guys can see the benefit it has with it, even though there is a lot of restrictions on space and whatnot. There's just a lot of character and wonderful things that it has to offer for this community. So I just wanted to let you guys know the benefits it does have for the business owners of Placerville. So, thank you.
Ruth Michelson, go ahead.
Oh, thank you. Yes, I really appreciate hearing from the farmers. And I really think those are the folks that we should listen the most closely to. This is their livelihood. And my husband and daughter actually participated in the farmer's market for many years and we got to know many of the farmers. And this isn't just a hobby. This is their living. And I think we have to be really careful with governmental overreach, which I really think this is. Look, this is free market. And I'm curious about who says they want fewer and bigger. I do hear what you're saying, Kara Supervisor Taylor, I mean, City Councilmember Taylor, I'm sorry. That is a beautiful dream. I'd love for there to be a huge overflowing market. And then people going on to downtown Placerville and doing their shopping and it being a big community event. That's great. I like that vision too, but I don't think we can force that. It's a free market enterprise. The markets that do well and succeed will continue and those that don't will not. You know, we've just had some issues recently with downtown where merchants spoke up against some chain organizations and we were told, just work harder and work smarter. Well, you know, it's the same for farmers markets, I guess. They'll either figure it out or they won't, but it sounds to me like they're figuring it out. And an idea for the bell tower that may be overgrowing and then it's bursting at seams. And then there's the, you know, eating establishments, the huts, the Powell's Steamer Hut right there would be in the middle. What about, for instance, going into the parking structure? Not getting in the way of the, you know, flow of traffic, but using some of the stalls. In the, especially for the people who right now are going down that alleyway. Maybe that would create more space for those people. And I don't think Wednesdays are particularly difficult. Wednesday afternoon, we have a big shortage of parking, I don't think in particular downtown to take up some of those stall areas. So anyway, like some of the others have said, is this really a problem that government has to get involved in and try to solve? Isn't this a free market situation? And I do think each of the markets really do fill a unique niche. And I would hate to see any of them go, especially the Sunday morning one that Lily runs where it's really a ethnic kind of a situation going on and a big cultural opportunity that we don't normally have in Placerville. And I think it's very rich. And I would hate to see that one go with a temporary use permit possibly limited in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ruth.
Gordon Helm, go ahead.
We can hear you kind of, Gordon. Nope, you sound like you're in a tin can.
My settings here, sorry. Okay, well, I'm going to guess just when I kind of concur with what I believe the majority of the commenters have stated in regards to postponing the decision tonight. There's, you know, there's been a statement made that there's been a formal survey or formal feedback from the customers, but there hasn't been a statement regarding informal feedback from the farmers, you know, themselves, the participants of this of this program, of these programs. And are the, I guess, the heart soul of what makes up these farmers markets. I believe that, you know, the central market location is an attraction. I believe that when people drive through town and they see that there's, you know, some activities going on around the bell tower, that that actually incentivizes them to want to stop and check it out. I think, you know, when others come into town and see that's going on, then they'll stay in town and spend money at other, you know, at other businesses that are there. With regards to considering moving it to the Fox lot, I think that's a detriment. You're talking about moving it to the western end of town, which means it's not really in the central part of town. But I guess even worse is that that lot is in the blazing sun during the majority part of the day, if not all day, and continues to be in the sun in the evening. And that is going to be a detriment to both, you know, reducing the visitors or customers that are going to visit the site and also potentially, you know, adversely impact the farmers that are there with their products being in the blazing heat. So again, message is that I think you guys need to consider postponing this and getting some more input from both the farmers and the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. I have to say, it kind of sounded like I was on the other end of a string with a tin can attached. Thanks, Gordon. Appreciate your comments.
Regina Miranda, go ahead.
Hi there, thank you. I just want to echo what Lily said earlier and I think that although I am in agreement that changes could be helpful to the overall health of our markets. And going back to what Ruth said to our actual growers and local producers, I think that maybe some revisions could be helpful and getting input from other market managers and growers as well would be helpful. And then I'd also like to echo what Lexi said, and that is just looking at our neighboring counties or a county or two over, Nevada City, Davis. You know, we don't have to reinvent any wheels, but having a larger, you know, board-run ag-centric group that isn't for profit or just an individual running market, I think would be really beneficial to consumers and then to the growers themselves. So I am definitely in favor of this, but would like to maybe see just some other changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina.
Caller with the last three digits, 857, go ahead.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, Michael.
Hey, so just going on the scoring, it looks like there's five categories of scoring with different percentages on how you're going to evaluate the proposals. There looks like there's five of them and the last four and five, I would like those swapped. Looks like the pricing for participating vendors is 5% score. Quality of getting the words right on your proposal is 20%. I would like those swapped. Because I think you're leasing public property for a for-profit or nonprofit thing. And the scoring for the pricing, to me, is more important than did you get your dot your i's and cross your t's. And I really thank you for doing an RFP on this. I've been screaming for this for years. You really are leasing our land to a for-profit venture. And they've been given a sweetheart deal over the years. We really need to to bring it down, boil it down, bring in as much money as possible to the city and have a great product at the end. As for the locations, I'll let the farmers talk about that. Question was, in the past, we had no visibility from Highway 50. The city does own the parking spots and the pole sign over by the caboose that's by the, now the tap house. And the contract for those parking spots and that pole sign, we're supposed to come back, I think, every year per review to the city council. So I don't know if that's a possible location. But thank you for the RFP. And I really think you need to do a bigger score for value of dollars back to the city coffers since we're leasing public land to a potentially for-profit system. So swap the percentages on number four and five of the scoring system. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Okay, Geraldine, go ahead.
Geraldine, it looks like you are muted there. Let's go ahead and circle back to Geraldine.
Okay, Melinda Velasco, go ahead.
Hi, I want to defer to the to the farmers and to the people who are working directly with the farmer's markets because they know kind of the ins and the outs. I know as a resident of Placerville, I love the farmer's markets. And I also, I would really watch out about trying to determine what the value of the market is based on what the perceived income for the, you know, city and all that. I don't know that that's a good litmus for determining what the value of the market is, the actual value of the market, because it's not necessarily an economic thing. I think part of it is, part of it's going to bring attention and tourism, you know, people downtown going to other shops that are there in brick and mortar. But there's other stuff that these farmer's markets offer and I really, it's a big deal in Placerville to have these markets. So So, um, it enriches the community in ways that, uh, you know, I mean, most of us are in agreement on this. So that's what I have to say, just postpone it, talk to people, um, and then, and then figure out a path forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Melinda.
Caller zero two two.
Hi, this is, uh, Greg Rocking, owner, operator of Rock Me Farms. And, uh, first time doing this here, and I appreciate you guys, um, having us do this. Uh, sorry, a little bit nervous, I guess. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can hear you great. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, so my concerns with, um, my first thought is moving, uh, the market to the Fox lot from Wednesday night. Um, and the problem with it before was, uh, when we did a Sunday market there, uh, we had no parking for the market at all. And so it deterred a lot of customers that had, that didn't want to walk away, um, mainly elderly and stuff like that. And then when the brewery was there, um, they had a problem with us using that lot because, uh, it's taking parking from them, which I didn't necessarily agree with, but that was my experience with the Fox lot. The other experience with moving a market, we saw our profits cut in half. And that was detrimental to us as farmers because we had grown crops for a previous year's market. And then we're also throwing away a lot of that crop because we do only sell at small markets and stuff like that. So for me, having multiple markets, because I am a small farmer, I pick three or four times a week and go to these markets to where I'm able to maintain my crops better by doing so. And so for me, it's been, um, it's, it's scary because it is my sole income for my, um, farm. And it's scary to me to think that, you know, I'm going to have my profits cut in half again and trying to grow from a new market and that kind of stuff. So those are my concerns and I would, I would agree with postponing this, um, to where we can really get a feel from everybody. Uh, because, I mean, it's a big deal for a lot of people. And so for me, you know, those are my thoughts. And thank you very much.
Hey, no further comment, Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, there was one that popped up. Um, and it looks like, uh, yeah, there might be two or three. Um, Shawna Hartzell, I'm not sure if I'm saying that right. Go ahead.
Can everyone hear me? No? How do I, wait? Oh, sorry. I'm not, I'm not good at this kind of thing. Um, hi, my name's Shawna Hartzell. I am the market manager for the Wednesday night farmers market for Eldorado County Farm Trail. And, um, I have, um, I just wanted to let everyone know, Eldorado County Farm Trails, we have the Wednesday market. It's a nonprofit organization that runs that market. We do a lot of work for farmers. We're pro agriculture. That's what we're about. Um, I'd like to ask if you guys could maybe rethink this and postpone it um, till you can get some more information. Uh, moving the Wednesday night market to the Fox lot, I think has a lot of safety concerns. I think that some more thought could go into it. And, um, also with the RFP, if you, you know, talking to the market managers, getting a little bit more information to put in there, ask for people, I just think it'd be a better idea. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, Elizabeth Dubose, go ahead.
Hello again, city council. Um, I appreciate the time to add my comment regarding item number 12.6. My request is to remove the agenda item number 12.6 until further notice. I believe that the community needs more time to reflect on this change. And coming from a, um, a member of the local economy and the local market, um, I believe that Lully has provided the perfect space and the perfect place to host a sole community market that brings, um, uh, Native American culture, as long as American culture, as long as, um, all the other items that bring us all together and make us unique. And I think that it adds a beautiful aspect to everything else that a Placerville is about. And, um, I just know that, uh, for a fact, there are members who would appreciate the expanded time to also add their input and receive a notice that there may be a possibility that their, their, their source of income, like many people have said, um, has come to an end. So please consider my words in your decision. Um, I think that it would benefit the community as well to hold your votes and give us some more time to, um, make a decision and get together and talk about it. Thank you.
No further comment, Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, we do have one, Lucio Day. Go ahead.
Can you hear me? Thank you. Sorry, I was, I thought I was in line on the phone, but it looked like I wasn't. Uh, thank you, everyone, for, um, taking the time this evening and all the work that you do. I really appreciate it. And listen to your conversation about starting at five and appreciate everything you do. So, um, I'm a local business owner and a farmer here in Placerville, and I have something written, so I'm just going to read it. Uh, if we want thriving profitable markets, there must be less of them. Small farmers don't need more markets. They need more sales at fewer markets. As a farmer here in Placerville, my business relies on profitable and efficient ventures in order to succeed. We rely solely on our farming business to make a living for ourselves and our employees. Over the last three years, participating in the local farmers markets, we have not had one profitable market and are not returning next year while we have really loved participating. There are too many markets and that are under-resourced and sometimes poorly managed. While I agree with the current proposal to limit the markets in Placerville to two, I think there is a missing key piece. If you look at the most successful regional farmers markets, Nevada City and Davis as examples, they're run by community-led organizations with systems of accountability for management. Without any systems in place, individual market managers get to choose whether or not they support vendors through operational or marketing and engagement support. Without any ability to hold management to account, we are left to the inclinations or abilities of those individuals. The market manager's motivation should be the farmer's success, and I have to ask, how do we ensure that without a governing body? An organization can manage the finances of the markets and raise money and provide support to management and thus to farmers. It's time to follow in the footsteps of the successful farmers markets in our region and allow for an organization to manage our markets, not individuals. Please contact a reputable organization like Farm Trails that has experience managing markets and explore this position with them. And if you choose to go ahead with the current proposal, please speak with our vendors and growers and managers when considering who to hire for this position. It's a tall order for one person to successfully manage a market alone and thus take someone with good intentions, time and energy. And I just want to say that the markets are not thriving in this free market competition idea. They're languishing. It's time to organize the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy.
Ben, go ahead.
Hi, my name, excuse me, my name is Ben Hanson. Uh, I'm a farm owner in Placerville. It's an interesting conversation. I, I think I really see both sides of, um, what's going on. But I think, uh, the reason why there's a lot of small markets is really, uh, a response to problems with our city's main market. Uh, the Saturday market is not providing the community with a viable, profitable and inclusive market. There are no board meetings, no marketing, no outreach, no collaboration with growers, bad communication, and no place for vendors to voice their concerns. Um, I think some of the other markets have done a much better job at doing that. And them doing that is kind of a response to not having that, uh, ability to do that on our longest running market. So, um, I do think we need fewer markets, um, that have a lot of sales, a lot of people. But until we, uh, figure out how to organize and collaborate together as a community to support our farmers as the main goal, um, I don't, I don't know, um, what the exact solution is, but I think, uh, what Lucy said really makes a lot of sense. So, um, yeah, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Okay, Geraldine, go ahead.
Geraldine, it looks like you're, um,
I'm muted, I think.
There you go. We got you.
Thank you. This is my first time and I'm really not prepared. Um, I do think that the most important issue is to get the opinion of all of Eldorado County farmers. And the next item I wanted to talk about is the Wednesday night market. It is a wonderful market. We've got people that can't go on Saturdays and Sundays that rely on that market. We have one very old lady that comes in, she's partly crippled, and she comes every single Wednesday night. Who is going to tell her she cannot come anymore? It is a very well-run, uh, farmers market. Um, and I love all our farmers and vendors there. And I walked around last year during the COVID thing and took 58 pictures of every single one of our vendors, and you really need to look at these pictures. Um, we moved down so that the, uh, restaurants could set up seating outside. Um, we had no issues whatsoever. We never have had any issues. I've been there for years and it's the best well-run, uh, farmers market that I have done in Eldorado County. Um, if I sound a little tearful, it's because I just can't imagine, especially this year, why anybody would want to rock the boat of a farmers market that is enjoyed by so many in a county that we have lost so much since 2020. Please, uh, wait on this decision. Uh, take it very, very seriously. Look at the Wednesday night farmers market pictures. Um, I can't say, I really can't say anything more.
Thank you, Geraldine. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
All right, I'm going to close public comment now and bring it back to the council for further discussion. All right, thank you. And, um, questions for Carrie? Comments?
Go ahead, Carrie. Well, I hogged the mic before. Do you want to go ahead?
Uh, yeah, I'm going to take a more unpopular approach and talk about things that people haven't been talking about, and that's parking. It's a, it's a huge issue downtown, and I think we have to look forward and look at the impacts that having these markets in our parking lots are going to have. You know, eventually we're going to recover. Eventually our businesses are going to be booming. And having farmers markets take up our parking lots is going to have an effect. So I think this is a, an important time to consider, um, where we're going to have these. Um, you know, bell tower ones, yes, some businesses have benefited and some businesses have not benefited. We, we need to look at the whole picture there. I think we need to look at other locations and seeing what we can do to help them market the, you know, the one that moved on Saturday, I didn't see a huge marketing plan, um, when it moved back there. There's, you know, a lot of potential there. And I get people don't want to give up their main street spot. I mean, that is prime real estate. But you have a lot of businesses paying prime real estate, a lot of building owners who built that parking garage, you know, helped do those things and it, and are, is what we're doing fair to all of them also. And so, um, I'm kind of in favor of continuing this conversation to find that balance of better locations. And I mean, we hear just a variety of more markets, less markets. Um, there's a lot to consider here, a lot to digest. And, uh, I think we need to take our time to make the right decision moving forward and look towards the future, not just what's going to work this year.
Thank you, Jackie. Go ahead. Uh, nice, McTaylor.
Um, you know, after hearing all the comments, I, I do agree that perhaps we should take more time with this. And I would volunteer to, um, reach out to the market managers and kind of bring them into the conversation and try to come up with a collaborative, um, approach to better, um, just improve the market so that they work better for customers, vendors and the neighboring downtown. Because there are, you know, I mean, as, I love the mark, the Wednesday market. I, um, I use that a lot when I was chef at the farm table. It was great for downtown, but there are real concerns about it. Um, you know, and it may not be addressed this season, but I think, you know, maybe, maybe my vision of having just like a really bustling farmers market scene downtown is a multi-year thing that we need to work towards. Um, so I would, you know, I would propose that I would volunteer to kind of meet with the market managers and other interested parties and work with Terry and kind of come up with, um, some ideas to bring back at a later date. There are some issues though that I, I, I kind of want to see where you stand on for this year. You know, last year we had what seemed like, um, just kind of looking at it from the council perspective, lots of markets that were just kind of applying, um, and on private property. And there wasn't really any policy about being able to look at an application and kind of look at the big picture of how these markets were going to interact with each other and the community. So I, I am in favor of there being an application process this year. And I, I'll have to ask Terry, um, kind of what the timeline is that you're working with to make this happen for the start of farmers markets. Um, because I do think that there should be an application. I do want market managers to have a marketing plan. I think it's really important for the vendors that participate, that the markets are well-marketed. Um, and that, you know, the, the things that the city needs as well are taken into account and that there's a plan for them. Um, so I, I do really want to see at least an application process this year if the larger discussion, um, kind of goes on beyond that.
All right, Michael, or Terry, do you want to answer any of those, that question first?
Uh, yeah, I'd just like to point out the, um, the idea of the speed and the timing of this. Um, there was a knowledge that, you know, the growing season is upon the farmers. Um, they are making plans through the winter for the things that they're going to grow for upcoming. So, um, the speed in trying to get this out and, uh, put out into a public format like this council meeting was just trying to, uh, if not get ahead of it, at least try to keep up with it so we could have some momentum for some discussion on items that I know have been, um, items of, you know, either contention or concern, uh, from the public, from the council, on how things have been going with farmers markets. And, um, you know, I, it wasn't an intention of, uh, trying to, you know, have government dictate or, or push through some idea of what, uh, we wanted without any feedback. And I think that it's, um, from the feedback I've heard today also, and the discussions I've had on the phone um, since, uh, last week when this was going out. It, it does, uh, look like we need, um, quite a bit of, um, ongoing input from the community uh, on, on how this needs to go about. So I'll leave it at that for now and let, uh, council, uh, move on with their, um, comments.
So I'm going to make a brief comment real quick. Along Terry's lines of public communication and sharing information, this is a, this is a good example where we are thinking of a program or an idea to bring forward to the community and have discussion about it. And this is the exact place that we should be having this discussion and have it in an open forum where everybody can participate. It's hard to do it outside of this and garner the attention with that. And have it in an open forum where everybody can participate. It's hard to do it outside of this and garner the attention without actually putting something forward, getting input. And bringing it back for discussion and then ultimately maybe making a decision or maybe not. And uh, and so I appreciate everybody's input and this, this is a good place to do this, to have this conversation, to have a conversation with the community and maybe look forward to. Like Kara said, talking about it further. So I'm gonna go to uh council member Sarah Gose for his comments and thoughts.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I, I mean, I think the one thing, I may have heard like free market thrown out there a few times and, you know, don't let government, but. Reality is, these are all on public lots. So it really isn't free market when your business is on a public. Piece of property that's government property. So, you know, there's, there's some room for, for, for. More discussion there, but this really isn't free market when you're, when you're leasing out a, a government uh public spot. So that's one thing. Uh, second is, we really should be cognizant of the growing season for the, the farmers. Uh, which you plant, you know, it isn't like if we, if we pass something today. And they've already planned their crops a year ago that they can make change. And, and so we really should be cognizant of that as we go forward. Uh, I do think we're gonna need more discussions, but I think above everything else, I mean, this is a farmer's market. It's supposed to be about. Actual produce. Uh, and so those are the people that I'd want to, to hear mostly from as well as knowing that. They do have a schedule that they have to do. And if you grow the wrong thing and it's the wrong timing, then you're either throwing away produce or you're not selling it. Uh, the way that you can to maximize your profit. So that is one thing we do have to take into consideration that, that Terry did bring up as well. Uh, and so that's, that's part of this, even if that meant having to stay with status quo until we actually got a good process in place. As we move forward, but um, you know, I, I, I think the idea of smaller, I mean, two. Uh, it makes a lot of sense because I've gone to all of them. I mean, even in the private ones that have been on private lots. And there are not a lot of people at them. Um, and, and I, and I do see that the Saturday one has suffered too, but again, I haven't seen what the marketing has been for it as well. Uh, and so it isn't. It, it, some of this is, is location, but some of this is marketing as well. To, to be able to get the word out about how do you do things, it's, if you're running that business and. It's part of like any business, you'd have to market how you, you get people to your location. Uh, and I do think that the Wednesday night one has outlived. It's, it's great and there's, it's vibrant, but it's also. You, you can't get any bigger. Um, and so it would just be the status quo if it was there and it doesn't pinch on the. On uh our brick and mortars as well that are in those locations. So I, I do think there needs to be, whether it's Fox Lot or something else. I, I also like the idea of mosquito. I know we talked about that last year as well, uh, when that idea came up. So I wouldn't mind exploring. You know, something on, at mosquito as well, because there are bathrooms there too. Uh, so I would be in favor again of, of holding this and getting more information. Uh, I think we can look to other communities. Um, you know, why reinvent the wheel if there's something really good out there and if we can get our locals to buy into that same type of program.
Thank you, Michael. Uh, Councilmember Burelli.
Um, I agree with um all the things that Michael just said. I, I really want to see. It, I, 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 I just cannot understand why, and I just cannot believe that business fell off thirty or forty percent. Uh, using the, the, moving it from the, the, you know, the lot along, up to, along the trail. I, I, I just, quite frankly, I just love the market up there along the trail. I mean, you know, having the creek run by and. And having all the shade trees and everything. I, I just think it's, it was just almost made for this farmer's market. I also um agree that uh the, around the bell tower. Um, I, I, I think it's um, you know, it's, it's. It's very congested there. And I, I think that there are more business owners. That are objecting to it, but they won't come forward and say anything because they're, you know, it might appear that they're being Scrooge, but. You know, we have to remember that those, all those business owners are paying a hefty rent and prices to be on that street and. To have to, you know, uh, lose their business uh basically uh one day a week in the summertime. Uh, that's asking a lot of them. And um, and I do think also that it's become so. Heavily used and congested that it's become a safety issue. And I, and I'm having a problem and I shared this with. Uh, Cleve, that I, I'm not in favor of the Fox Lot either. I don't like that location. I didn't like it when it was proposed before and I don't like it now. Um, I agree that I think we ought to really look into up on Mosquito Road and when that's all finished, I, I just think it's kind of an ideal location. And I believe it was Dave Hardy sent an email. And he was uh questioning why, or did we consider maybe going down on Placerville Drive to the, you know, next to the lot. Next to the theaters. And I, I think that's an ideal spot. Uh, I don't think we need to constantly consider. Everything needs to be in downtown Placerville. I mean, a market is a market and people drive to them, so you know. Um, I, I, there's just other parts of Placerville that I think we could consider. And I'm, I'm all for uh tabling this for a while and. Having a lot more discussion.
Right, thank you. I'm gonna keep my comments short because I can get a sense of where this is going. Um, I do find it interesting that um, that the community, that, that our community as a whole, and I think of our communities. You know, from the city's perspective, the city of Placerville, the city limits, but so many people think of us as their town. And so I, I have this juxtaposition of being the mayor of Placerville, but yet the mayor of. So much more. And so representing so much more while representing the individuals and the businesses within the city and the people that live here. Is it, is an interesting balance that we have. And I, I just throw that out there for thought. I, I found, I also found it interesting that some, a few small farmers said that they need more farm, need, need more uh venues. And then a few said they need less and better. And so there's, there's, there's a lot of opposing thoughts and I agree that. That having everybody coming in and, and having the opportunity to let them kind of think through the process and doing that. I also agree with Kara that we, I think we should put forward something that requires some uh semblance of, of, of a. Application process that they meet certain criteria to put a farmer's market together, including marketing. So I think it's, it's not doing. You know, if, if farmers are just trying like crazy to find a place to, to sell their goods, but the places they're finding aren't really doing them justice, I think that the. We can hold to a certain criteria to, to help these farmer's markets do their marketing if that's what they need to do by virtue of setting standards. And which would help everybody. So with that. I, considering the timing and everything, I, I see this, this going on till next year actually. And, and really spending time to do this right and really get a lot of input and look at other markets, but at the same time. I think we need to, we need to have something in place for, for Terry to work with some guidelines, some, some guardrails on this to uh. To, because we don't want everybody that comes to the farmer's market for Terry to have to go, hmm, what are we gonna do with this one? Do we want to give them some uh? Some help and guide and, and rules on that. So where do we, any suggestions on that?
Um, I'll, I'll go. I mean, I, I think from the comments, uh, and Mr. Mayor, just as you said, I mean, there does seem to be some consensus amongst the council of. What we'd like to see recognizing that we need more input and what that input would look like. Um, I'd be interested to hear um Terry's thoughts at this point or even Cleve. Um, to see from the comments so far, from what each council member has, has said. If, if there's something there or if we need to give more direct. Uh, you know, guidance on, on where we go from here. Um, I certainly agree that an application process makes sense uh for this year as well. Even if it is a, a more. Even if it's for the status quo, but it's still a, an application process for those locations. Um, so that we have actually a marketing plan that, that we can see going forward, but. I, I'm interested to hear what, what they have to say as well.
Maybe I'll jump in first and then Terry, you can add to this. Um, I, I think, uh, I, I appreciate the conversation. I was thinking as this was all going on, I was thinking, man, why did, why did we push this, this, this far at this point? But um, I, I don't, looking back, I don't necessarily regret it because I think we got a, a lot of the input that we needed. If we did just put kind of an informational item on. We probably wouldn't have had near the people come out and talk to us about it. And I, I apologize to those that came out that may disagree with me, but. That's normally the process and until we push it to a certain degree, we just don't get the comments. And with that though, I, I agree with the idea of postponing. I had thought of this. Based on some of the comments we were getting during, during the day today and I, I don't object to that. I think that that's a good idea. As far as the application process. What I see have been, and I, I, I really value Kara's uh opinion on this because she has. She's been a part of farmer's markets and, and so I appreciate that, but. I see the application being simply if we can devise some guidelines of if the farmer's market can check the box, that yes, I have this. And maybe it's a semilla to, to prove on certain things, but if they can check the box. Um, and, and this would apply to both those on, on our lots, but although so those are required, ask for a temporary use permit on private lots. They can check the box. That's the requirement and, and we, we approve it for this year. Um, and then we can proceed forward to talk to uh our current operators, uh, to the farmers, et cetera. And hopefully come up with a plan. It's been suggested a couple of times, uh, the community board that would, would be the operators of these. And I think they. I think the one on Wesy kind of has that through the farm trails uh process. Um, I'm not sure about the other one. I don't believe the, the, the others that I'm familiar with, I don't believe have that, but. Maybe that is a, an avenue that we can begin to pursue and get something set up to where next year, earlier than this, we could be prepared to. Um, and it may not be an RFP process, it may be some other process we develop that identifies. Uh, how the markets will, will come about and how they'll be run. So that would be my recommendation that uh. We, we work, Terry and I could work and, and perhaps with council member Taylor to, to review, but. Set up kind of guidelines if they can check the box for this year. Uh, you're, you're good. Um, we'll, we'll look at the facilities. Uh, not move any markets, obviously. Um, but uh, uh, again, I, I do think um, we, we now have. Uh, the three that we've identified on public lots. Uh, the one direction I would ask for you, are you open or do you want to not have any more on public lots? And that when I say three, I'm saying the one on Sunday that was spoken of tonight and then our Wednesday and Saturday markets. Uh, do you want us to consider anything further on public lots uh beyond these? Other than that, the private lots, I think that if they can check the boxes, that, that's up to them. So.
I would vote to look at mosquito.
Yeah, I would, I would look to give them the option. We have that area set up behind Ivy House that also has the parking, so I would give them the option of along the trail or mosquito. I, I'd be open to either of those options and people put out a lot, a lot of other options on private lots and, you know, I was doing some poking around today on. Just see how other areas are doing it. And a lot, a lot of the markets don't put it right on their main drag and they have very successful markets that aren't. Right there. And I even saw one was on a Rayleigh's parking lot, one was in a Target's parking lot. Um, so there's a, a lot of options, but as far as. Public property goes, I, I would be in favor of the trailer, the mosquito parking lot.
Yeah, and, and to council member Burelli's point, you know, Placerville Drive as well.
Yeah, and again, I'm gonna answer, I, I'm open to the private ones wherever. I just want to make sure on the public ones, uh, the mosquito lot. The, the one thing you need to remember, depend on how big that farmer's mar, if it became a farmer's market. You're back to some of the concerns we had with the Ivy House lot in that you're putting. The market where your parking is. And if you do that, where do you park?
Right.
Um, I will say, depend on what day of the week, the, the smaller parking lot at the, at the mosquito parking lot can get pretty full. Uh, many times. So anyway, just, so just think about that. I'm not saying it couldn't work because it's a pretty big lot, so perhaps only half of it is for. Um, uh, market and the rest is for parking, so it, it could possibly work also.
But the thing about it.
Go ahead.
The, the thing that is clear with that one, um, it, you know, being up there. That's all the parking that's gonna be there. It's not like, you know, they can go elsewhere, really. There's, uh, I guess they could, if EID is closed, maybe they could use. EID's parking lot. You know, that might be a, a possibility, so. But I think we have to really consider the parking up there, but I think it's a great spot.
Yeah. Kara.
Can we have um an application deadline and maybe set, you know, the number that we're going to allow to no more than the number that we allowed. This last year, because I think that that's like.
Yeah, I agree.
Um, and can we have that include, like, that be the total for either on city property or on private property? Can we just say like, we're gonna allow, you know, a maximum of five markets and it doesn't really matter where the applications come in at, but. Have them all abide by the same deadline and the same criteria?
You mean just for this year until you have that full conversation?
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
But is that legal with the special use permit to have that be part of this?
I, I think that we probably can. Um, I don't know, Pierre, if you have input on that, I, I think that we could do that simply. You know, kind of count up the ones we had last year. And I know that I, or I believe. And I, I'll look at Terry for this, but I believe there was at least one market last year. That did not have a temporary use permit. We learned of kind of halfway or towards the end of, of the process. Um, and I'm not faulting him. I'm just saying we, we, that one didn't have, so do we count that as one of those in the process and? And, and et cetera. So Pierre, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I'll just make a, um, just a few comments. We have uh two farmer's markets that operate under a temporary use permit. The, when we issue a temporary use permit, it's only good for one year. Uh, we have a very small farmer's market that operates and I think it's on. Friday, I can't remember, but it, it operates at the, at the Marshall Hospital and it's very, very specific to serving the hospital. And then we have the other one, that's the SOL farmer's market that's at the Midtown Mall uh that operates on, I believe on a Sunday. And so those are the only two that we've been issuing temporary use permits for. Um, I would like to have maybe some additional time to talk with our legal counsel. I'm not sure if we have a bit, the ability to. Blanket, uh prohibit a farmer's market that's permitted currently under our zoning ordinance. Without maybe coming back to the council with some more specific amendments to the code. Uh, that would then basically state that farmer's markets are only permitted then under some other process rather than the TUP process. Um, uh, that we currently have in our zoning code.
Pierre, I think you've correctly identified the problem. And definitely we would have to take a look at that and come back with some other formal process that would have to be approved by the council.
Yeah, we could essentially come back depending upon the direction of the council. Uh, we would come back, uh, with either a. Resolution of intent to amend the zoning ordinance, or you can do it by minute order, directing staff to make certain changes. We can come with some, uh, maybe some recommended um alternatives that the council could consider regarding a temporary use permit.
Yeah, I'm sure. I, I'm comfortable with that. I mean, I, I think on private land, uh, as long as they come and get the necessary. Permit from us, you know, I, going back to the free market, that is private property as opposed to what we do on our own. Uh, city of Placerville property. Um, I'm not sure I'm, I would be supportive of uh limiting that, even though I get the bigger idea of trying to make these into. I, I feel like if those wither on the vine, then they wither on the vine. Um, but. I would be, I would not feel comfortable forcing a, a private sector law that, that goes through the proper channels to. To deny them the ability to do that.
Mr. Mayor, I may be making a comment slash question. Yes.
Um, one of the concerns that I have and, and I'm gonna defer to Terry, but um. I don't know how many of the existing farmer's markets are still under a lease. Uh, agreement for the use of the property. Those lease agreements typically in the past. Have renewed every year automatically unless either party, the city or the tenant. Notifies the other of their intent not to renew the lease. So any changes that we would want to make with respect to their occupancy, including. Uh, the requirement of an application, for example, would be contrary to the existing lease and we would have to notify them. That we do not intend to renew the existing lease that we're gonna make some changes in it, depending on whatever the council wants to direct. But Terry, I don't know if we have those leases that are still in, in effect that have that clause or not.
Um, I believe that the Wednesday and the Saturday.
Um, I believe that the Wednesday and the Saturday markets are are both under that and plus the, um, the Sunday market. With, uh, Dan Harland, um, the Hangtown Farmer's Market on Sundays. Was a a new lease that was started last year, so it would still be in effect with that one year notification for renewal.
Yeah. So and I think the timeline for renewal is coming up very quickly. Uh, at least for the notification. Uh, so that's something we need to be cognizant of.
Right. Yeah, that's that's a that's a consideration.
Then, uh. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Taylor.
So my understanding that were we to make any changes at all to application or doing an RFP. All of the markets that we have currently, we need a year's notice.
No, um. The leases were typically written for one year, but automatically renewed for maybe three successive years unless. At some period of time, generally, I think it was around March. February or March, they were notified that we were not going to renew the lease. So we can, we can not renew the lease, but we have to notify them and then we can change the terms.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody want to entertain a motion?
To 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 table this? And what? What kind of emotion do you do you want?
Um, well, I was kind of seeing what the feel of the group is here. The, uh, to table, you know, we we we've worked pretty hard to get to to get to the conversation where it's at right now. Um, I could see this going into next year with some guidelines for this year, keeping. You know, trying to keep status quo and and I could see really developing a robust program. And taking some time to do that. I I see and I hear everybody's comments and how. Diverse they are and yet, uh, how, you know. Centered they are on wanting to do a really good job for our community and improve putting out these farmers markets. So. That's kind of where I'm, that's kind of where my head is right now.
I'll throw out a, um, and see if this lands anywhere near where we want to go. Uh, I would, uh, make a motion that we, um. Allow for, uh. Three applications, uh, for the upcoming, uh, farmer's market season. Uh, and that we take more, um. Information to look at, to look where we go for twenty twenty-two. Uh, or excuse me, twenty twenty-one. No, twenty twenty-two. Sorry, sorry, I got it and get my, um, years mixed up here. Uh, so that would allow for basically status quo for this year in terms of the amount. I think. The locations can still be up for. Discussion. Um, but that would still allow for three. And, um, I think there still would be wiggle room on the days as well.
Are we are we doing an RFP or we letting the three continue and if those don't, then a additional?
I think.
I would.
Sorry.
Okay, Kara. No, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
For this year, um, you know, just kind of a basic application that sets some standards for marketing the market and making sure that, you know. They're doing the things that the city needs them to do, um. But just kind of the more basic application that lays out their their work plan. Versus an RFP.
This is a. This, I think we need to. Maybe redo the motion, Mike.
Sure, I I guess I have no.
I know.
Authorship on this one, so, um.
Maybe our city manager or John Driscoll can suggest something we can, they've heard everything we're trying to say.
Well, I think we have to address, um, the applications that have the automatic renewal. So if we're going to, um, require an amendment on the location, we actually, you know, first, we need to notify those three applications. Of our intent to to change things. Um. They'll allow the three applications with the changes. Go ahead, John. I see you there.
Hey, can I make a recommendation? What I think. I think that for our three markets, um, that we have contracts with currently. For this year only that we should renew, that just let those continue as is, not try to adjust those. Uh, we can, we can establish the rest will probably be private markets. We could get another one to come in on a public market. Um, if they do, we will put together the same agreement or very similar and we can. We can look at some standards and question them on on things like marketing as they come into there for the private markets. Um, we can put together some guidelines that I believe, and I'll ask John Driscoll and Pierre this. That we could attach to as as conditions to a temporary use permit. Um, for them to come in. I I think very simple things, you know, uh, provide us your marketing program layout of your market. Just very simple things like that. That that they have to check off and submit with their temporary use permit. And I think Pierre and Terry and I could put that together. Um, and and include that, uh, as an attachment for Pierre to include when the temporary use, when they come in and apply for a temporary use permit. Uh, again, I don't want to make it anything too cumbersome, especially this first year, but something that. Hopefully they're already doing and they can define and we'll make it fairly simple for them. So. I guess my recommendation on motion was is to postpone the RFP process at this time. And then, um, create a, uh, some standards for a markets going forward on private lots. And then third, to continue, uh, allow the the current agreements that we have in place on our public lot.
I'll move that.
So just so I understand you, Cleve, that you're saying to leave the market at the bell tower. And not to move it to the Fox lot. That's part of your motion for this year.
Correct.
Here.
Not not my motion.
No, 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 your recommendation. I mean. I mean, because the council kind of said we wanted to move those, but you're now saying, no, I think we should leave them where they're at. So I just want to make sure that.
I I think we need more input based on that's kind of what I feel based on what we heard tonight. Um, again, I I was part of bringing this forward because I do have concerns about, you know, congestion, safety issues, traffic flow. Around that market, but we will work with them. We'll do what we can for one more year. And work out how we can facilitate what we need to do in the future.
I do think that's the cleanest and and it also goes back to the farmers that have said, you know, we need some surety about. From the year before, before we start making our plans for what we're going to grow going into the next, uh, into the next year.
Right.
Yeah, I would add that the markets are a lot like the Titanic. You can only turn it a little bit at a time. And if you want to steer it on the correct course. So I think that that's. Uh, from the from the staff perspective is is a good motion to follow up with.
Yeah, I I will second that motion. Any more discussion? All right, let's get a real call.
Councilmember Burelli.
Hi.
Councilmember No.
Hi.
Councilmember Saragosa. Vice Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Thomas.
Hi. Okay, there is a point of order that we need to address here in that we are after ten o'clock and that. If we want to continue on, we'll need a vote of the council to continue this meeting on with the. Additional agenda items that we have.
All, uh, point of order, um. What? Um, trying to say this, what do we absolutely need to do tonight? I have, I feel like twelve point four is going to get a short shift in in terms of the discussion at this point. But I also am cognizant of of time in terms of something that we need to get done from a, um. You know, from a, you know, that we have a deadline to meet, but. Um, I just don't know if.
I agree. I'd like to hear from from the department heads about which ones really need to move forward.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if I may, um, twelve point five and twen- twelve point seven, those are both very time sensitive.
Okay.
They should go rather quickly. They're not controversial and. They're fairly simple.
Right.
Mayor Council, I believe we could, um, that we could postpone twelve point three. I know I've been putting that off for a while, but. Um, I actually have a meeting with the, uh, water board on Thursday, I believe it is. Uh, phone call with them that they requested. Um, I don't think it changes anything that I have here, but. If you'd like to postpone that, that may work to postpone that to our next meeting, but I will need to make sure we have take action at our next meeting. And then also, although I think it may be a fairly quick item, I suppose twelve point eight can potentially be.
I would rather, I think it'll be a quick one.
Okay, so and I find us keeping that one on if you want, but. Um, obviously, we are, we know about twelve point four. I'd love to give that the time that it deserves, um, but I'll I'll leave that to council. What you want to do with with twelve point four.
So, uh, your recommendation, Cleve, is to, uh, table twelve point three and twelve point four. Till, uh, for future agenda.
Should we also be having a conversation about a special city council so that we don't, uh, get too behind in all the items?
I think, I think I. I I can work with the mayor on that. He has the authority and call a special meeting. I can work with him and. Um, if we think the the one, you know, I need to look at our next agenda. I haven't looked at closely at that to see where we might be, but. The one, the big issue I think tonight is the the policy manual, the traffic calming policy manual that may take us some time to get through. So. Uh, perhaps we, perhaps we consider a special meeting just for that item. Um, I don't know, but I I'll leave that up to you.
I'll make a motion that we continue tonight's meeting, uh, but table items twelve point three and twelve point four.
A second.
All right, we get a roll call, please. Do we need public comment? About for table items.
Um, I'll defer to our city attorney. On table item.
No, no, you don't.
Okay, thank you, John.
Uh, roll call, please, Mr. Cal.
Councilmember Burelli.
Hi.
Councilmember No.
Hi.
Councilmember Saragosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Thomas.
Hi. All right, so we have tabled, um. Twelve point two, twelve. No, we are moving into, no, we table twelve point two. So twelve point three and twelve point four on to twelve point five. And authorizing the city manager to apply to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. Department HCB for a local early action planning leap grant.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council will try and make this, uh, brief. Essentially, the city, the state of California is trying to provide ample funding to further affordable housing throughout the state of California. So the state allocated approximately a hundred and nineteen million dollars to available to cities and counties. Uh, to avail themselves to, uh, do different, uh, programs or enter into agreements with consultants. To do whatever is necessary to further affordable housing. So based on the city's population, uh, the city is is eligible to receive sixty-five thousand dollars out of that pot of money. And so, uh, this this request is to authorize then the city, uh, manager then that to fill out the correct documents. Uh, mainly also that you, um, approve of the resolution. That then authorizes the submittal of the application. So with that sixty-five thousand of the LEAP funding and that stands for, uh, local early action planning grant. Uh, for housing production. Uh, we're we're proposing to do, it's called objective, uh, design standards. So we've identified, uh, three parcels in particular where. Uh, we're looking at affordable housing as identified in the current housing element. And in our current housing element update. And, uh, with some other monies that we received through the SB two grant, uh, that you have previously authorized. We intend to do the environmental review for those parcels as well. As well, so that we can make those essentially a turnkey applications. It makes the housing project more affordable because there would then be no discretionary action available. They can come in. And develop those three properties. Uh, we would have the environmental review done. And with this grant, uh, we would hope to have some objective design standards. So we know what the, uh, buildings and developments would look like. Uh, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Staff is requesting then that you would then, um, authorize a city manager to execute standard agreement. And any other documentation necessary to to secure the award and adopt the resolution, uh, doing these items. Happy happy to answer any questions you have on this.
Any comments for here? All right, seeing that, I'll open it up for public comment.
Public comment is now open for item, uh, twelve point, I'm sorry, where are we? Uh, twelve point five, the local early action planning grant. Uh, we'll start with, um. Caller eight five seven, go ahead.
Good evening, council.
Good evening, Michael.
Uh, I just want to reiterate that you really should be leery of taking free money. Free money. For. What is going to down the road really constrain us in designing how our community is built. Um, I can see this tied to a another item down the agenda. And what they're doing is they're dangling money in front of you. Because your staff is constrained and overworked. And the city is out of money. And there's all these state regulations to get all these things done. That you're just going to take the money and do what they say. But. I can see what's happening. Um, the state and. Actors are really trying to push you in one direction on how you design and build your city. And I don't like it. And I really think you should. Deny this. And build your own standards. I understand the constraints of staff and money. But. I think this is, um. Not a path that you really should go down and that's my warning. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael.
Kathy Lishman, go ahead.
I do apologize. My computer went dead and now my phone has to be plugged in, so. I didn't quite follow everything and I did hear what Michael said. I guess my interest is in. Traffic and in, um, as we build affordable housing. What kind of standards are we going to have? Design standards so that the housing. Reflects our small community and so that it is really great places for the people that live there. So my my concern is design. I didn't really get a chance to hear everything Pierre said and. I can understand Michael's concerns. I think. I think it would be good for us to know what the city can do to be proactive to help us create the kind of community that we want. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. All right.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That's quite all right. Ruth keeps popping up and disappearing, so, uh. Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ruth.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I I did. You're right. I had hesitation because to tell you the truth. I really don't know this item very well and I like to be prepared. Um, but I just want to say in general that, you know. If if there are some restrictions on this money. But you're fine with them, please go ahead. If this creates more housing, we so badly need it. Um, I heard a story once of a woman. Who who listened to these types of meetings in another community and anytime any housing of any type. Came forward to the, uh. To the council, she said, yes, build it. Because she knew how far behind we are, especially here in California in our housing. And also here in this county specifically. You know, it's got to have a good trickle down effect. And again, I'm sort of talking off the top of my head. I'm not really familiar with the project, but, um. We have such dire shortage of housing. And and it just trickles down to create a worse situation with our homeless population. So, you know, the more we can create, please do that. And I hope that my comments have made some sense in the context of what you're looking at tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ruth. Oh, right, seeing no more public comment. We'll go ahead and close public comment, bring that to, uh, council for additional questions and action. So I I got a question for you, um, Pierre, if we don't. Have design standards and pretty much. Uh, they can come in, you know, based on the, um. They can come in, you know, based on the their right to build on these in the overlay. They can pretty much have any design they want. If we don't have design standards.
No, that's not correct. It would be, let's just say, one of these lots that are identified in our housing element that we're looking at. Creating objective design standards for it would mean that it would be a discretionary application at this point in time. The applicant then would be responsible for having done or having to do the environmental review and then doing the design. Developing their own elevations, site plan, submitting that to the city. We would go then go to the planning commission. And in the planning commission where they have the authority to approve of the site plan review for the affordable housing project. That would be then consistent with our with our development guidelines. So what we're trying to do is do the upfront work on these lots. So that a developer then would come in and they already have, they already know what the buildings are supposed to look like. Because the city had already hired a design team to design what the buildings will look like. And we would have a public hearing process. We would do go through the secret process. And all that is, you know, involves the public as well. It's just done up front. So that then these lots then can be developed with an affordable housing project ministerially as opposed by right. So it saves that developer time and money in order to build the building. So I hope that makes sense. And I hope that allays the fears from some of our previous speakers. We're not circumventing the process. We're just doing the design work, the environmental work up front. So that then the lots become ministerial as opposed to discretionary. I hope that makes sense.
And I I'd have to agree with Kathy that anytime we can, you know, do some, get some more housing in our community, I think that's within reason and within. Hope it's a good idea. Council member Borelli.
I I was going to ask the kind of the same question you did, Dennis, because I had. And I I had, I think I questioned Pierre on this when this issue came up a long time ago. But I think we're all fearful that if we have this, somebody coming in and putting up a unit, that it's going to be like a box. You know, and we, I I just, I think we all just want to be really sure that we are going to have. More of a design and have the the ability to, you know, have more of a design that fits in with our community. Not something standard that's on a piece of paper that the state issues or whoever, you know, we're having to answer to.
Yes, if I could respond to that, that's exactly right. And that's what we're proposing to do with the sixty five thousand dollars is put out an RFP. To select a responsive architectural or design firm to come in. And then do the pre-design work for these lots. And we won't be doing that in a vacuum. We would have a public hearing. We would go through the environmental review process. So that then we have the standards already prescribed for the lot. So then, instead of being discretionary, when the developer comes in and the developer is submitting their own elevations and design. It's pre-designed for that developer. So it's turnkey for them.
So is it the, I mean, is the facade, you you're going to go that far? Or is it just designing where the buildings are going to fit on the lot? I I'm I'm thinking, I'm I'm looking right now at the aesthetic value, the outside, what the, you know, what the buildings are going to look like to us as we drive by.
It's more of the aesthetics than it is the development standards, but it will be the overall design. For example, if if we wanted the particular apartment complex to have a pitch roof, to have certain color schemes.
Okay.
Certain materials, to have an internal courtyard, all those kind of things we want to pre-design. And then that'll be a condition of the project. If if they were to come in, that's what they have to build.
Okay. Okay. I I just think I I just want to get that in my, I want to make darn sure that that's what it's all about.
Right, it's either the city doing it up front.
Right.
Just as we did on the Middletown. Cold Springs Road Affordable Housing Project and the one Alpha Mallard. Both those projects are ministerial because the staff had already gone through a lot of the pre-planning effort. Plus the one on Mallard, it already had an approved elevations for that project that they would need to follow.
Thank you for that clarification. I know that's critical. I know that a lot of people have discussed. You know, whatever, whatever construction goes on in the city that especially ones that come in trying to do affordable housing that that blends in with our community. Adds value to the aesthetics rather than just the.
Yes, that's exactly what what we want to achieve here. I don't want anybody to think that somebody's going to be able to come in and just put up a box.
Right.
Thank you. We can get a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
All right, we got a person. Second, we get a roll call. This is O'Connell.
Council member Borelli.
Hi.
Council member No.
Hi.
Council member Saragosa. Vice Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Thomas.
Hi.
All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item twelve point seven, adopt a resolution approving an agreement with BAE Urban Economics. To prepare a fair housing assessment program. Fair housing assessment program development and. Mapping services as part of a two thousand twenty one to twenty nine cycle six housing elements update in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. And once again, Mr. Rebus.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This one's a little bit different. Instead of leap fundings is what we call reap fundings. Or regional early action planning grant. That's being funneled through CACOG. And so CACOG, CACOG offered us ten thousand dollars to do. Work on developing our housing element. Staff is currently working on the cycle six housing element update. That's for the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty nine planning cycle. And so what we're looking at doing with this money was to hire a consultant to do the fair housing assessment. That's a new requirement for the cycle six housing element update. We haven't done this before. And it's very, very, it's it's very complex and it would be very time consuming. In fact, I don't think staff would 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 be able to actually prepare an adequate fair housing assessment in accordance with the government code. And CACOG is aware of this as well, and they were actually looking at. Hiring a consultant that would do, that would prepare the fair housing assessment for all the member agencies within the CACOG region. They're still working on that, but we're ahead of the game here. We've been working very closely with CACOG on putting this together. We actually did put out an RFP. You can see in the staff report, we received three proposals. One for fifty six thousand dollars, one for forty thousand dollars, and then we received another one for for thirty six thousand six hundred dollars. So. We did not expect these these proposals to come in that high. Because again, this is, this is a new ground for us, you know, what to look for for fair housing. And so we looked, we actually, all all three were very responsive. All three could have done the job. But ten thousand dollars was not going to cover any of these costs. So staff actually went back and worked more closely with BAE Urban Economics, Bay Area Economics. And we were very happy with them. We we spoke with CACOG. They've worked with them as well. And so we were able to negotiate. Reducing that contract amount down to fifteen thousand. So.
Wow.
And so we have the, yeah, what staff's going to do is. A lot of the, do a lot of the work as well, but they're going to do a lot of the heavier lifting, more of the technical work, which is what we need to have done. And so so we're we're proposing to use the ten thousand dollars reap money from CACOG. And then we have five thousand dollars that we have in our current operating budget already approved. For 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 the Development Services Department for outside contracting services. So fortunately, we have that amount of money. And so so with that, we're just adopt, we're just going to request that the council. Approve the proposal from BAE to prepare a fair housing assessment. Program development and then mapping services as part of our cycle six housing element update. For the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. And then authorize a development service director to execute the letter agreement. And then three, approve the ten thousand dollar budget appropriation regional early action planning grant for said agreement. Be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
I don't have any questions. I just want to say that's great and congratulations to you and your staff for taking this on. Because I know it's probably, you know, adding already to a load that you guys are carrying. But this is great that you're going to, that you're willing to do that.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Thank you, Patty. Let's go ahead. No, yes.
I was going to say, just Pierre, just to underscore again, this is a legislative mandate, right? I think it's AB thirty six or something like that. That had this equity, housing equity add on. So it isn't something that we can like not do.
That is absolutely correct. We would not have a, we would not be able to get our housing element certified if it didn't have this, and it's quite extensive. So it looks to the past land use patterns. Are we involved in doing anything that's sort of segregating out different income groups or different ethnicities and that kind of thing? And so you drive around Placerville. I don't think you really have that. Like, say, when you drive around some of the bigger cities, it's clearly there's been some redlining or different land use patterns that have, you know. Caused the separation of different communities. I don't think we have that in Placerville, and so we were able to to work with BAE and actually reducing the amount of work. Because we don't think it's going to be a whole lot of work. But we definitely want to be consistent with the new state laws. All the discussions, all the discussions I've had with CACOG is. The Housing Community Development Department is going to pay real close attention to this section of the housing element update.
Thank you, Pierre. I just wanted to underscore for the public that this isn't a, it's very something that we're just doing. It is an actual legislative mandate. And and thank you. Great work. Well, what Patty said, to get that down, because you're right. We're not going to have those redlining historical issues that maybe are exist in some other areas.
Thank you for those comments. And thank you, Pierre. And let's go ahead and open us up for public comment.
Comment is now open for item twelve point seven, the agreement with BAE Urban Economics. We'll start with caller eight five seven. Go ahead.
Good evening, council. Hey, so if you could look at the bottom of page one of two. Underneath the proposals, the RFP proposals, you got one, two, and three. Minter Harnish at fifty six grand, Michael Baker at forty grand, BAE at thirty six grand. And then the following paragraph. It says, following staff evaluations of the proposals and follow up interviews, altered proposals considered adequate responsive to conduct of work. Staffmen negotiated with BAE Bay Urban, Bay Area. Urban economics. To reduce the cost of fifteen grand. So my question is, if an RFP was put out. And then staff agreed to go with the lowest. Bitter. And then only. Negotiated with BAE to reduce their cost proposal in half. Did they do that with number one and number two? So if staff took the lowest bid. And negotiated it in half, did they offer the same opportunity to bidders number one and two? That to me would seem to be a serious violation. Of RFP rules. And reading what BAE promotes on their website. This is not something you want in Placerville. What these people propose and push is exactly what I was warning you about earlier. This is gentrification and urbanization and San San Francisco-ation, if that's a word, of Placerville. And I'm warning you now, and you've been warned. That's it. Bye.
Thank you, Michael.
See no further public comment, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Regina. Kathy, it looks like her hands up.
Kathy, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask if Pierre might know this, if Minter Mint there has, is the one that did our general plan in the past. Minter.
All right. Thank you, Kathy.
No, but but, okay, I thought he would answer. Okay, sorry. It's very hard with. With Zoom, by the way. And the other thing I wanted to say is I'm really proud of Placerville. Most of our neighborhoods are mixed communities. Anyway, I I understand what you're saying about they're not going to find. Certain things they find in other communities. And I just wanted to say how proud I am of Placerville to live here. In a community that has all kinds of values of houses in the same neighborhood. Thanks.
Thank you, Kathy.
Mayor, I think we're good. No further public comment.
All right, Jean, thank you very much. Bring it back. We'll go ahead and close public comment. Did you have any comments further, Pierre?
Just a couple. One, I will say that it was, I believe it was Larry Minter and Associates. That developed the city's general plan back in nineteen eighty nine ninety. So Minter Harnish is a, it's sort of a different firm, but it has elements of the original one. So, yes, it's not exactly the same one, but it's the same Minter. And then the previous speaker, I'm not sure what the previous speaker's concern was, because this is not a. This is not a land use effort. It's not going to affect any land use patterns. It's to look at how how the city. How the current land use pattern, is there any racial discrimination? Are we being adequately fair? Is there redlining? It's all those kinds of discriminatory practices that can occur from loaning institutions to. Deed restrictions to land use patterns that would show that we're discriminating against either a group or or some other. And so that's what this is supposed to do. It's a new requirement under the state regulations. It's not to gentrify or it's not to forward anything else. It's just to show if we do have some kind of discriminatory practices or there was an area where only this ethnicity can live in a particular area. Well, then they will help us develop programs to sort of undo that. But I agree with the last speaker that I think you go, you, any of us familiar with Placerville, we're a pretty mixed community, and I think we all should be proud of that.
Thank you, Pierre. Getting entertained a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve staff's recommendations and adopt a resolution.
A second.
Right. Any further discussion? All right, roll call, please, Regina. Oh, it looks like we have further discussion.
I was just going to say, you know, it's it's unfortunate that we kind of have to jump through these hoops at significant expense to the city. And I I'm really happy that we were able to not pay fifty six thousand dollars. To this is, it would just be nice if the state was going to require us to do that if they paid for it. But thanks for getting the price down.
Sure, you're very welcome. And with that, you just reminded me of something. I don't want you to go away thinking that we're violating some state contracting law or something like that. We are not, the city has broad discretion on negotiating with with a prospective. Contractor that's doing professional consulting services. It's different than a public works project that say, you know, Rebecca has to deal with the contracting code. We don't deal with that.
Other long list of unfunded mandates from the state.
Yes, indeed.
All right, Mr. O'Connell.
Council member Borelli.
Hi.
Council member No.
Hi.
Council member Saragosa.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Thomas.
Hi.
All right, unanimous. All right, moving along to twelve point eight, adopt a resolution, authorize the city manager to negotiate. And execute a contract with BK Consult for a governance workshop program in approving a budget appropriation for the general fund continuously for the unforeseen expenditures. The amount of twelve thousand dollars for said contract and cleave.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This was on your last.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this was on your last agenda consent, to consider, uh, contracting for a governance workshop. There's a similar to the program that the Elrod County does and, uh, Mayor's, Thomas and I have spoken to this person and feel, uh, very comfortable that this was a good, is a good program that will benefit us in, in making our decisions and moving the city forward. Attached to the staff report is the proposal, which is a proposal for four, or excuse me, three meetings. There is an optional meeting in there. I'm not recommending it this time, but we could add it a later date if we determine that that's something we wanted to do. Each meeting, uh, is approximately four to six hours. So figure a one day workshop, basically. And, uh, it's $4,000 per workshop. That's all inclusive. That's includes, uh, there will be interviews with individual council members prior to that, uh, to gain some insight and all of the costs of preparing the documents and et cetera is included in this. So uh, the total cost would be for three meetings, uh, which will be spread out throughout the year. It's my understanding, at least probably a couple of months in between. And so total will be 12,000 for those three, uh, workshops. Uh, the request is to authorize me to negotiate the actual contract, but the dollar amount is already set in the proposal. Uh, not looking at the dollar amount, but just the provisions of the contract to make sure we have everything covered. So with that, I'll, uh, give it back to council for any comments, questions.
Okay, comments before we open. All right, we're gonna move to, uh, uh, public comment, open up public comment.
Public comment is open for item 12.8, the governance workshop item. You listen, go ahead.
Um, as long as I'm still awake, um, I was gonna ask you how the public can participate. I know the county has had these workshops where the public actually came and was part of the audience. So I, I just wanted to know what you had in mind. Thank you.
I believe that's all for public comment, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Regina. And I, and I believe we're gonna operate it. It's, it's, it's gonna be a publicly held meeting. There'll be time for a public comment. And, uh, it'll be at the, well, we'll figure out what that looks like, uh, as we prepare the agenda, but it is a publicly held meeting and it's under the Brown Act. So it'll be like any other meeting.
Correct.
All right. All right, if we can get a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, do we get a roll call, please? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Borelli.
Hi.
Councilmember No.
Hi.
Councilmember Saragosa. Sorry, I missed that.
Sorry, hi.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Hi.
Mayor Thomas.
Hi. All right, thank you very much. And, uh, moving on, we, uh, we tabled item 13. Moving on to item 14, request, request for future agenda items. And I'll note that we had that item from, uh, public comment open. Public comment earlier from Chapman, if anybody wishes to bring that forward, otherwise fail for lack of notice. All right. Anybody else, any other item, any, anybody else for any future?
Do we need to schedule a meeting for the items we didn't cover or is that, we're gonna leave that to the discretion now? Mayor Thomas to call a special meeting?
I think Cleveland and I are gonna discuss that as we forward with, move to, none of them are time specific, so it's just a function of whether we want to go a special meeting or not.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, just, just quickly, I think the only question is on the traffic calming manual. The other items, I hope that we can work into our regular meeting, the next meeting or, or so, so.
I do have, I guess I do have a request. This goes back to my comments earlier. And that is, I just want to make sure that the peak, uh, membership is actually representative of everybody that we needed to be. And I do have concerns with, um, uh, PDA, uh, with everything we've gone through and the fact that we don't actually have the same relationship with them, uh, even from what happened last year where we divested the, or as our, a former colleague said, uh, they broke up with us before we could break up with them. Uh, so I don't know the efficacy of, of that position still. And so I, I want to make sure the central business district is still well represented.
I wish we could have representation from Placerville Drive too, but, um, and I'm, oh, well, you know what? We do have Kevin. We have Kevin. That's right. I'm sorry.
So with the self-imposed deadline of the 12th, how are we? How can we move through this?
I would, I, I'll go ahead, Vice Mayor, sorry.
We can see if we get any applicants. You know, and if, if, if the goal is to represent downtown, you know, we might, we may get an applicant that's a member of PDA. That is a business downtown and, you know, they will represent downtown.
I think the challenge with what Michael is just, is bringing forward here is, is that PDA represents, uh, well, last year, 39 members, which precludes any other members on Main Street participating, basically. Prior, prior years, they, they represented the entire street without exclusion. And, and now it's different. And so, and I think that's your concern, um, without getting into too many details and debating this here. Do we have a path forward where we could make this adjustment, uh, considering the 12th, the day of the 12th? I'm looking at that.
It, it, it's, it's going to be difficult because of, as was mentioned, the deadline of this Friday, the 12th, uh, for the applications. I suppose if we don't get applications by that date, uh, we could, um, then on the, your next meeting, uh, that comes up, we could ask for, uh, a review of that. We could bring back a review of that resolution and it's the extension at that time. Uh, but that would be two weeks from today, so the 23rd of, of February.
Yeah, I share Michael's concern in that, is there a simple way just to say we'll take any applications from businesses in the central business district as has been in the past, including with PDA? You know, instead of just make it inclusive as it has always been regardless of membership.
That's, I think, sorry, I, I think we, we can do that, but we would have to do that through the resolution, not through not just, because it's currently done by resolution. So we'd have to modify that resolution.
Right. I guess what I would ask for then is an extension on that particular committee so that we could have that resolution.
We can bring that back on the 23rd. That's the problem. Yeah, we can, we can do that. The, the difficulty will be is if you receive adequate applications by Friday, you maybe need to consider those at that time. So, John, do you have anything to add on that or correct?
No, I, I think you, you did say that if you do get adequate applications by Friday, that's gonna present another problem, but any extension I think needs to be done by the council at the next meeting. And I think the council could as a prerogative of extending it, uh, reopening it, so to speak, and extending it anyways.
Okay. So, uh, can we get a, um, a vote of, uh, not of the heads to bring that forward to the next agenda item and get a thumbs up? All right, we got one, two, three, four, five. So it looks like we can bring that forward to the next, uh, meeting on the agenda and we will, I guess we'll kind of words, uh, how that's gonna look. All right, any further, uh, future agenda items? All right, seeing that, moving on to city managers and staff report. We're gonna receive and file the police report and station 25 report.
Fine, unless there's any questions or comments on that.
Okay. All right, seeing now at this point, we open this up for public comment at this time. Yes.
Public comment is open for, um, item 15.1 or 15.2, the police or, uh, fire reports.
Yes. All right.
No public comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I, I would actually ask, uh, if Chief Brin or Chief Cordero have any significant occurrences that they would like to report. If not, um, we'll receive and file. All right, I get a head nod and, uh, thank you, thank you for the report and I, we appreciate it, uh, being passed on to the city council. You guys have a good evening. All right, um, let's see, moving on to upcoming agenda items. So we have a, a list that is growing rather than shrinking, it seems like. But the way we go and I will go ahead and adjourn this meeting at, uh, 10:46. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.